Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. This is the Cedarburg Board of Education meeting at 6:32 PM. Do an attendance roll call. Mr. Goldbeck on the phone?
Here.
Padberg?
Here.
Leach?
Here.
Krier?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Netso?
Here.
And Reimers, here. Thank you, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board, and as a public meeting, prior notices have been placed in the district. Additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg, as well as the news graphic in Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united in the midst of injustice and error. All right, everyone. We seem to have 20 or so people in the audience that are not wearing masks. And I want to remind you that on October 28th, 2020, the Board adopted that face coverings are required to be worn by all individuals when on school grounds and school buildings, and while transporting students in district-provided contracted vehicles. When in an occupied room or when eating, drinking, the mask may be removed. When outside of school buildings, mask may be removed. When six feet of social distancing can be maintained, all student athletes participating in district-sponsored indoor athletic and extracurricular activities are required to wear face coverings in accordance with WIA guidelines at a minimum. Special accommodations may be made for health-related conditions on a case-by-case basis. And at this time, I move that we take a recess in order to let the individuals comply with our mandate so we can continue with the meeting.
I'll second that.
And if we're not going to have any of that clapping or cheering or anything like that going on, if we do, we're going to have to take another recess. So just going forward, please refrain from clapping or reacting to any anything by the Board or any individual in the audience. Do I have a second?
Kennedy, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. If somebody has an exemption or an exception request, how do they do that?
Well, we can discuss that. But I mean, we would trust that they're adults, and if they do, that they'll be following, you know, following the guidelines that we expect our children to follow on a day-to-day basis. It is a policy, and we'll be following several policies today, hopefully. And I know it's one of the questions that is on the agenda. And so in order to move forward to have that discussion on the masks, I feel that people that do not have the medical exception should put on their masks. So to comply with district policy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call.
Aye.
Padberg?
Aye.
Leach?
Aye.
Krier?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Netso?
Aye.
And Reimers, an aye. We'll be taking a recess at this point.
I, we have to make a decision here. Are we continuing with our meeting or not? But I think at 30 minutes, a lot of, I see a lot more masks on than there were before.
Yeah, I'll call it to order again. And our assumption is, is that everyone is following district policy, especially the health-related conditions on a case-by-case basis. As you said, we can't ask people, and we've been told by a number of people that they do have health-related conditions. And we will, we will continue at this point.
Mr. President, I'd like to add-
At the tone, please record your message. When you finish recording-
That's not what I meant. There's a different, just to clarify maybe, Chris, that there's a different type of exception for students and for employees versus visitors, just to, you know, make that clear. In other words, a student is going to, you know, can't come to school without a mask and say, "I've got a medical exemption," without actually going through a process. Correct?
Correct.
Correct. All right, well, first order of business while we're starting up here is that we have three students that are here to sing for us. And I'd like to apologize to Jasmine, Katie, and Evelyn for this delay. And looking forward to your singing. Thank you, thank you for waiting.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board. We are Katie O'Connor, Jazzy Stork, and Evelyn Jones from the CHS Acapella Choir. This year, the choral department had 32 virtual solo and ensemble entries, and 28 of them qualified for state. Please support our music program by tuning in to our upcoming radio show, Spring Sing Concert, tomorrow, Wednesday, the 28th, at 7:00 PM on the Cedarburg Public Library Radio Station. We are so excited to sing for you today, so please rise for the National Anthem. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave? Thank you. Before we go, we will sing the school song. Hey, Mr. Kirth, this one's for you. When our colors fly from our banner-hark, we'll be there to guide the way. When the bulldogs fight with their main and might, we will follow them day by day. With a thousand voices we chant our praises, as true defenders of the orange and black. For the sun can set on our greatness yet; lest the boast of CHS-
Thank you very much. Next order of business is proclamations. Mr. Krier? We're waiting to get Brandon Goldbeck back on.
I'm ready, Mr. Reimer.
Thank you.
All right. So the state of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamations. April 4th to 10th, 2021 is National Library Week. April 19th to 23rd, 2021 is out-of-school-time Professionals Appreciation Week. April 1st to 30th, 2021 is the School Library Month. And April 1st to 30th, 2012 is also Military Child Month. All proclamations are available on the district website.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item, Board Reorganization, Item A.
I'd like to, this is Kennedy. I'd like to nominate Chris Reimer for Board President.
This is-
Second.
This is Krier. I would like to nominate Mr. Leach for Board President.
We have, the first motion was from Kennedy, and second by Padberg, is that correct?
Yep.
Any discussion?
I think we have to vote on them one at a time, I think.
Yep. We're going to do a roll call.
Well, did somebody second the Leach motion?
If there's a motion and a second, then we would just ask for other nominations, and then we'd have a written ballot. You don't vote on each individual nomination.
First one, if they don't have majority, you go the second, right? Yeah.
I can't hear you.
As long as you have a first and a second, that nomination stands. You do not vote on each nomination. If there's other nominations, those are made. And then at that point, we have a written ballot for anybody that's in, and we need a majority of those votes to win.
Okay, yeah, we can do it that way on paper.
You don't, you don't vote on each one.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would like to second nomination of Rick Leach.
So we have a motion and a second for Mr. Leach as President. All right. Any others? All right, and then for Vice President, I'd like to nominate Kevin Kennedy.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Dave Krier. Normally, in the past, we voted on each one separately so that if someone didn't win, they could be the next nominated for the other. We've always done each one individually.
Okay.
We didn't do them all.
Well, that's a good idea, because otherwise you might end up, you know, you might take someone out of the mix.
Yeah, because then you'd know.
Yeah. You wouldn't even know if somebody, they could be nominated and not be available.
So then we'll do a ballot on a piece of paper. First one will be for President.
Yeah.
Everyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay, and then Brenda, if you could communicate with Brandon offline.
He could probably, he could probably just text her. His vote.
We ballot on the first one or the second one? We ballot on the first one or the second?
You ballot on the President.
So the first one, one vote. The two choices are Rick Leach and Chris Reimer for President, one or the other. And then Brenda will come by and collect.
So we're doing Pres first?
First actual election we've had in about 10 years.
Yeah.
I have four votes for Mr. Reimer and three votes for Mr. Leach.
Okay. I'm not clear how do we vote on that, or that's just it?
You're it. You win. You have to have a majority of the members in the meeting present.
Okay.
I nominate Mr. Krier for Vice President.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Mr. Krier. And there's also a motion and a second for Mr. Kennedy. The motion was made by me for Kennedy and seconded by Padberg. Anyone else? All right. We'll do the same thing. One vote, and it's either Kevin Kennedy or David Krier.
I don't have to accept that, do I? Like if I-
I don't know.
You don't have a choice. What's that? You don't have a choice. Oh. You could not accept it, but you're going to accept it.
Brandon Johnson? Yeah. Shoot, I don't know.
That's it, you can step soon.
For Vice President, I have five for Mr. Kennedy and two for Mr. Krier.
All right, the next office is for Clerk. Do I have any nominations for Clerk?
He's not here, so I nominate Mr. Goldbeck.
Second.
I decline the nominee.
Okay, so he formally declines?
I was told I couldn't.
I'll nominate Kristen Padberg for Clerk.
I'll second that.
I accept.
All right, so we have one nomination. Anyone else?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote for that. We'll start with Goldbeck.
Aye.
Padberg.
Aye.
Leach.
Aye.
Krier.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Netso.
Aye.
And Reimers, an aye. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next is Treasurer.
I would nominate Rick Leach for Treasurer.
Second.
Motion and a second, anyone else? Roll call vote, Goldbeck.
Aye.
Padberg.
Aye.
Leach.
Sure.
Krier.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Netso.
Aye.
And Reimer is an aye. And then the next position is for Brenda, Secretary.
I nominate Brenda Roth.
I second.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call. Goldbeck.
Aye.
Padberg.
Aye.
Leach.
Aye.
Krier.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Netso.
Aye.
And Reimers, an aye. Thank you. All right. And in front of you, you were shared a proposal for the structure and assignment of meetings, meeting assignments for buildings and grounds, Personal and Finance Committee, Policy Committee, Curriculum Committee, Negotiations Committee, and WASB Delegate, CISA 1 Board Rep, City School Liaison, and Teacher Engagement Council. Does anyone have any thoughts on the way that's proposed? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I propose a change to Engagement Council.
Okay.
Kate, if you want to trade WASB Delegate for Teacher Engagement, that'd be my proposal.
Not knowing a lot about either position, I'm kind of excited about Teacher Engagement.
Can you speak up a little?
Sure. Not knowing a lot about either one of those, I kind of was looking forward to Teacher Engagement. Can you tell me a little bit about the WASB Delegate?
Yeah, so I believe there's a meeting once a year. Brenda, you're going to have to help me with that. And it talks through somewhat, some policies that they talk through at the state level. Kind of fits back into a little bit on the Policy Committee, which I'm on, but not a huge time commitment, a little bit more high-level at the state.
What if we approved it, and then you guys worked it out? The two of you worked it out later? Would that be okay with you, Kristen?
Yeah, that works for me. Chris, does that work for you, or should we move on?
Yeah, and if there's a change, we'll just bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. That works.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve it. Approve the School District Board Committee Assignment Proposal.
I'll second, Kennedy.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Can you lose him?
All right. Moving on from Goldbeck, let the record reflect that at 7:19, Brandon Goldbeck is not on the meeting, apparently. Padberg.
Aye.
Leach.
Aye.
Krier.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Netso.
Aye.
Reimers, an aye. All right, moving on. School Board and Committee Meeting Calendar. It's presented in your packet. Any thoughts on that? Any?
Moved to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Padberg.
Aye.
Leach.
Aye.
Krier.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Netso.
Aye.
Reimers, an aye. Brandon, are you on? Okay, still off. All right, next item, minutes, regular board meeting approval of minutes. Consent Agenda, Todd.
Thank you, Chris. Board members, I'd ask that you approve the consent agenda, which includes the board meeting minutes from March 17th, 2021, also includes the Budget and Finance Report, which includes the district financial information, including the summary of accounts, check register, check- I got that. And credit card transaction report, and the personnel report. And I'll ask Mr. Conrad Partner to speak on the personnel report. He'll come up to the podium and share the details of that report.
Still live. This evening, for the personnel report, we have a separation of employment for Bethany Schweiter, Heather Sibley, Ben Coltes, and Julia Chalmowski, all submitted resignations effective at the end of this school year. We have contracts for the next school year, 2021-22, for Tony Mudry, Megan Dewall, Taylor Schmidt, Molly Halbin, Melanie Carlson, Claire Berry, Maria Harder, and Megan Smith, all educator contracts for next year. The last contract for approval, since it's a little bit of an unusual situation, our new high school principal, I'm happy to introduce, is Casey Boe. Unfortunately, he's working in Wyoming right now, so it was a little difficult for him to be here. Normally, he would be here to be able to answer some questions or talk a little bit, so I'll do my best. Mr. Boe was selected from a pool of 20 applicants. Screening process whittled that down to six individuals for a first round of interviews. Out of the original six candidates, two were brought back for a second interview. And that second round included representatives of the administration, staff, parents, students, and school board. Mr. Boe is currently the Principal and Director of Technology for the Big Horn County School District Number Three in Gray Bull, Wyoming. Prior to that, he was a science teacher at the middle and high school levels in Gray Bull for 11 years, so he's finishing 15 years in Wyoming. He's got his master's degree in education from the University of Wyoming and a bachelor of science degree from the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare, and he earned his teaching certification at UW River Falls. One reference stated his knowledge in the area of instructional technology is unsurpassed, and another said he was the best teacher he's ever had the pleasure to observe. His administrative leadership has been outstanding, described with terms like passionate, dedicated, incredible work ethic, great rapport, and exceptional leader. Through the interview process, we learned that Mr. Boe is all about relationships, being prepared, and following through. He's a true problem solver and a collaborative leader. If the name's familiar, it's because Casey Boe actually graduated from CHS in 2000, so some people might remember the name and know of him. As a Cedarburg grad, he's very familiar with the community, familiar with our high expectations, and he's extremely excited to be coming home with his family. We look forward to transitioning with him between now and his official start date of July 1. So we ask that the Board approve those contracts this evening.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Kennedy, second.
Motion and a second, roll call. Padberg.
Aye.
Leach.
Aye.
Krier.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Netso.
Aye.
Reimers, an aye. Thank you. All right, moving on to Superintendent's Notes. Mr. Bignacki, do you want to do Building Plan Update?
We will, under Superintendent's Notes, address the building project plan update, so I'd ask Ross Iger from CG Schmidt to come on up to the podium and make a presentation on the status of the building project. We are into our final phase of the building project, and I suspect, Ross, your time with us is nearing an end. Probably just a few more updates and we'll be done. So this update has been presented to the B&amp;G Committee, and Ross wants to present it to the full board this evening.
Good evening, Board members.
Ross, you may need to up the, move the microphone a little bit higher as well.
All right, a reminder of the major themes of the project. Learning, creating learning spaces, school capacity, safety, and security.
Can you move the mic a little closer, maybe?
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
A reminder that our schedule, we're in a bit of a pause right now, waiting for the end of the school year, and we'll work into our Phase 3 here at the high school, which is a little bit of renovation up at the administrative offices. So the budget, there's been a few changes since we last met about a month ago. And you see those highlights. Again, a reminder, the first column is the update from November 29th, 2019. That was the first update that we went through. The previous update, that's that center column, that's what we looked at last month. And then the latest numbers are in that final right-hand column. So for expeditions reasons, we just highlight on the yellow, or we just talk about the yellow highlighted items, those things that have changed. On the bottom of the first page, a little bit of good news there. We put in an application for focused-on-energy rebates for some of the energy-efficient components that went into the project, and we received a few more checks back on that, another $30,000 this year. So that's a positive. So that's a positive for the, for the budget. No new changes on Page Two. At the bottom of Page Three, under the low voltage category, there's been a few minor expenditures as we've worked through some of the details on the Phase Three portion of the work regarding some of the low voltage security and security and clock and PAC systems in those spaces. There was also an expense for a sign, a new sign at the administrative office. That's the number that you see highlighted to the right in the middle of this page. And then finally, at the back, the summary, just looking at the numbers in the gray highlighted areas near the bottom. We still have $702,000 remaining in construction contingency, of which we are anticipating about $11,000 in upcoming PCOs. So bottom line, we are at $609,000, just over $609,000 remaining in unallocated budget slash contingency. So any questions on any of that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. All right, next item is update on current COVID mitigation measures and forecast. But what I'd like to do is move that after the public comment. At 7:45, we'll start the public comment. What I would like to do is go into recommendations and not address any of the COVID mitigation items that are listed in A through D except. Or however, I would like to address the other items on recommendations in the next 15 minutes or so and see how far we can get with those. So with that in mind, I'd like to start with item E. And that is water main replacement at the high school.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve. It went through building and grounds. It's something that needs to be done. The timing is right to get it done now while other construction is being done on Evergreen Boulevard this year. So the timing is right to, to do it.
I concur. It's something we really need to get done, and we should get it done this summer. So we're ready for the school year, and we don't have an issue if a pipe breaks.
So, Rick, you made a motion. Kevin, is that a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, Padberg.
Aye.
Leach.
Aye.
Creer.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Netzel.
Aye.
And Reimer is an aye. Moving on to item F.
So I'd just say, John Costa, thank you very much for your work on that. Really appreciate it and seeing, having the forethought to get this work done before they start tearing up the parking lot and those types of things.
Mr. President, without someone on the phone, we could speed up these votes. They don't need to be roll call anymore. We could go back to our normal function.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Thank you. Item F, sound wall.
That was also brought up at the building and grounds, and the recommendation is to approve the sound walls. As you remember, that came to the board once before, and it was pushed off while we waited to see where we were sitting financially. But this is another item that the time to do it would be now during the summer because they have to pull out those cabinets to put the things in. So the timing is right to get it done now instead of pushing it off till the very, very end. So I'll move to approve.
I'll second, Kennedy.
And just quick clarifier for ENF. This is from referendum funds, right? Referendum funds?
Referendum funds, yeah. It's part of the building project.
Part of the project, okay.
If, if the board members remember, we talked about this at a board meeting a number of months ago and decided to table it because we just wanted to make sure the contingency didn't get used on other things that were, that came up during construction, which things happen. And now as we're getting to the end of the project, we wanted to revisit this. So what we did, we put it in a parking lot, we called it. And now is the time to revisit it.
And we're feeling good with Phase Three and where we're at with contingency, that no exorbitant cost is going to come through that Phase Three.
Correct, yes.
Kevin, Brenda's asking if you can move closer to the mics. She can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Will do. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, thank you. Teacher contract renewals, non-renewals?
So Conrad, I don't know if you have any additional comments. Annually, we bring the contracts forward at this time for approval. And, and you have in the board docs those, those contracts, the names of those that we want to approve.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item H. School safety drills.
Title safety.
In front of the board tonight are our school safety drills conducted by Cedarburg High School, Webster Middle School, and Thorson Elementary. These are for review only. They are not for approval or vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item I. Tonight in front of you, on item I is our annual agreement for autism intervention consulting services. As the board remembers, this is our annual, just up of the agreement. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, just so the people here know, we're kind of buzzing through these fast, but we actually have reviewed these beforehand. They come in the board packet. So we're taking everything very seriously, even though it's happening fast.
It's also been through committee as well?
Correct, correct. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item K.
Item J is our 21-22 CISA One contractual agreement, which is our annual renew of that with our local CISA. I'm moved to approve.
Second, Kennedy.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now, item K.
Mr. President, I'll move to approve with the exception, I asked that Board Policy 144.5, it's a board actions, that that be sent back to committee due to concerns that were expressed about it. I'd like to see it come back to our committee. Otherwise, I move to approve all of them. And also, the public comment at board meetings, I would like to add, school district employees somehow cease some this that our school district employees should be able to speak to the board at a board meeting.
That's, that's Policy 167.3.
Yes, yes. Neolen, I don't know why that wasn't in there.
I'll second.
Yep.
Any discussion?
I think those are good changes.
Yep, I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item L, donations.
Thank you. This evening, board members, we have five donations that I'd ask be approved through consent agenda. The first donation is the amount of $19,750 from the CHS Athletic Boosters. This donation will be used to support the CHS athletic program. Next donation is the amount of $1,500 from CHS Athletic Boosters. This donation will be used to purchase gold mats for the CHS golf program. Next donation, the amount of $5,000 from the Athletic Boosters. This donation will be used for indoor batting cage for the CHS baseball and softball programs. Next donation is the amount of $1,200 from RedGen. This donation will be used to support the CHS student RedGen program. And the last donation, an amount of $500 from Faith Lutheran Church. This donation will be used to support the CHS Peace Scholarship Award.
Move to approve the donations.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay. We can move on now to the public comment section.
Do you want to do committee reports?
Sure, we can do that. Policy committee, Mr. Leach.
Nothing to report, we handled them all tonight.
Okay. Personnel and finance committee, Mr. Goldbeck. Anyone else in the committee? Can you report on his behalf?
Yeah, Dave and I were there. Just gonna get my notes.
Go ahead.
Hold on, pulling up my notes here. We did revisit the budget. That'll come to the full board for review in the summer. Yep. So we were able to look at, you know, some allocation of funds. We are expecting to get monies from the federal and state, if I remember correctly. Just federal, thanks. And so that'll help mitigate a lot of the funds that we put towards the mitigation efforts for COVID within the district. So we'll be excited to present that to the full board as we get more information in the coming months. I know I'm missing something, Dave. I was kind of sick of it.
I think you've got pretty well covered. Unless Ben Irwin has any kind of, point out, point out any kind of glaring omission?
He gave you the thumbs up, you're good.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And then the next item.
Building and grounds.
And that is Mr. Kennedy.
Right, we met on April 20th. We talked about some of the items tonight, the items that were in the parking lot. We still have some items in the parking lot that we can work on and work through at a later date. But we did add a static pressure sensor for the wood shop collector. There's a concern that that could blow out the duct the way it's currently configured. So we approved that. Other than that, we covered everything in the presentation made by Ross and also by the amendments we made tonight.
All right, thank you. So for those of you following along on the agenda, the items that we still have to address are 5A, and that is Mr. Bognacki's update on current COVID mitigation measures and forecast. What we will do is have the public comment meeting, public comment section. And then we will have Mr. Bognacki speak on item 5B. And then we will address recommendations, item 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D. So before we get started with the public comment meeting portion, I have a disclaimer to read. In addition to that, I have a list of some 37 people that would wish to speak to the board tonight. And it's not limited to that. So anyone else in the audience may speak on that. What we are limited to is three minutes, and three minutes of speaking per person. And that will be strictly adhered to. Mr. Leach, at the end of the table, has an app and a timer on it, and it'll notify you when you're getting close to your time being up. This is simply just to keep it all equal between all members of the community for them to be able to speak. So we will, we will, as we have in the last, last few meetings, we've been using this tool, and we will stick to that adherence. So I'm going to read the disclaimer now, and then we'll get started with the public comment portion of the meeting. I wanted to say earlier, we had some enthusiasm, and we had some people clapping. And if you could please refrain from that, we don't want to, to get into that at this meeting because it's not the decorum that we'd like to, to have. We'd like to have people speak and, and have their chance and keep moving this process along. So, on with the public comment disclaimer. "In the past, the State Attorney General issued guidance on how governmental bodies, such as school boards, should conduct the public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meeting laws. The essence of the guidance is that unless the topic being brought to the board by the public is listed on that means agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity to participate in the discussions with the full school board. We, on the school board, encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we also take the state's open meeting laws seriously, and will follow the guidance as outlined by the State Attorney General. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between the individual from the public and the board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. Furthermore, per school board policy 0144.2, the board will respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable laws. This includes, but is not limited to, information under current or imminent litigation and/or student-specific information per policy 8330. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you would like to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you are also encouraged to discuss any issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of the board setting. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As per school, school board policy 1673, each statement made by a participant As per school board policy 1673, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with courtesy and respect. You would like to receive in return, when you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. If you are under the age of 18 or are a student in Cedarburg schools, please only state your first name. Again, if you are under the age of 18 and you are making a public comment, or you are a student in the Cedarburg schools, please only state your first name. Do not state your last name or your address. As a reminder, the meeting is being livestreamed via the district's YouTube channel and will be posted on the district's website. Thank you. So I'll move through. Mr. Leach, are you ready?
I'm having the timer. Go ahead. We're gonna let it ring down to three minutes, because I don't know how to reset it.
Go ahead. I can manually do the first one if it hasn't timed up.
Okay. First speaker is Jessie M. Are you here?
I can pull a timer.
Say their name again. Jessie Mukhambu, I believe? Yes.
It's Mukhambu.
Mukhambu, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Can you guys hear me? Because I was having a hard time hearing people. Okay, good.
Jessie, I'm gonna time the one minute first, and then I'll start the timer for the second two minutes.
So you want me to wait a little bit? Do you want me to do a little dance?
You just go ahead and start, and I'll manually time it, and then I'll hit the button to start.
I can just go. I promise you, I haven't been over the three minutes this time.
Okay.
I know you guys like timing like that. My name is Jessie Mukhambu. I live at 2339 West Custer Avenue. Racism in Cedarburg School District is real thing, and it is hurting our BIPOC students. Racism comes in many forms. It is not just walking down the street with a torch or calling the person the N-word. I have spoken on microaggressions at past meetings and have explained that those are just as emotionally damaging. I'd like to remind everybody that even though you guys think I've only spoken a couple times, this will be my seventh time in front of the board regarding the racism in this district. I want to say that CSD has done some great things for my family, since my family has been part of the community. I say this because even though some in the district made sure that they helped out my children a couple of times over the last few years when I was deathly ill, the racism that they experienced overshadowed those times. I'm saying this because I truly do not believe that every incident of racism that my children or my family in general experienced was on purpose. Unconscious bias is a real... And it is alive and well in the school district. This is why I ask for bias training and anti-racism curriculum. I have to wake up every day and make sure that I check my bias, so I know that everyone in this district can benefit from it. I live in a world where I have to check my bias in the morning, go throughout the day fighting for equal justice for my husband and my children's rights in that same breath. So I know that it is a lifelong thing. You cannot just wake up someday and say, "I'm not racist," and then that is the end of it. Society has created a bias in us, and it is our job as a society to combat it. The systemic racism problem that BIPOC students face on a daily basis is not a problem that we created, but unless we all realize that they are suffering from it, we are perpetuating that cycle of psychological damage to those students. Most BIPOC students in the district wait to tell their parents the racism they suffer because they do not want the same treatment that my children, my family, have suffered from speaking out against it. There are children in your district that have suffered and are currently suffering to this day. Please care about my children's mental well-being like you do your own. No child should have to suffer any form of bullying, especially not discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Erica Turner?
Good evening. Erica Turner. Give me a buzzer already.
That's the last one.
Okay. W66N732 Madison Avenue. There you go. Cedarburg School District, your apathy is causing you to be stuck in a cycle of inaction. All the while, your students, under your care, are navigating through their formative years with chronic stress caused by repeated experiences with blatant and covert racism, microaggressions, insults, bullying, and harassment. CSD has stated that mental health, well-being of our students is important. However, you have refused to listen to us and take action beyond performative gestures. Do you believe the stories of racism and race-based bullying within the district that families, students, and community members have shared with you? Do you believe us when we tell you that the culture and the climate of our schools is toxic, harmful, and traumatizing for people of color? Do you believe that you have, quote, "vigorously enforced the prohibition against harassment, threatening, insulting, and dehumanizing gestures," unquote? Can you see that CSD is allowing an intimidating, hostile, and offensive educational environment? You must recognize your role in creating and recreating trauma in students, families, and communities of color. Avoiding these issues continually harms our students and reinforces that tolerating, ignoring, and deprioritizing racism is acceptable. You need to understand that our lives matter, our ideas matter, our opinions matter, our dreams matter, our mental health matters, our children matter, our history matters, and our future matters. Cedarburg School District Board members sent out a letter stating that there should be no doubt about the district's position against any and all racism, discrimination, and harassment of students of color in its schools. Well, there is doubt. So what will you do to put action behind your words? If you truly welcome all voices in this conversation, then you should hear my voice telling you again that you're falling short. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Lena.
Hello? My name is Lena. I am a freshman at Cedarburg High School, and I am speaking tonight in regards of keeping the mask mandate, quarantining, and contact tracing, as is for the remainder of the school year. Over a year ago, students and teachers alike were confined to their homes for what at the time was supposed to be only a few weeks. It ended up lasting through the end of the school year, leaving many students, including myself, stuck and having to catch up on virtual learning. It was also a very depressing time for many, students unable to see their friends and teachers in person. While the pandemic thrived, student mental health declined at a rapid rate, leaving many unmotivated with school and life in general. If we lose the mask mandate and have an outbreak on our hands, we will likely be in the same situation all over again. When the mask mandate was put in place, many were upset, but not because it threatened their health, as they claim, saying it restricts their oxygen, because they weren't given full control over their choice to wear a mask or not, claiming that it threatened their freedom and human rights. There are signs behind this, and no, masks do not restrict oxygen. COVID-19 spreads primarily through respiratory droplets, which are exhaled and released through talking, coughing, sneezing, and even breathing. Multi-layered cloth masks have been proven to block 50% to 70% of exhaled drops and particles. 50% of more are transmitted from those who are asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, meaning they have not yet developed symptoms. All of this boiling down to one thing: wearing masks protects others, not yourself, from COVID-19. We are in the middle of another COVID surge, and there are new strains being discovered. And while, yes, there is a vaccine, they are limited, and very few of the student body has received one dose, let alone the standard two. Think about your students. Think about how they would feel if they were stuck in another shutdown. There's no reason to repeal the mask mandate, and for the safety of the students, I ask, please don't. 572,000 people have lost their lives in the United States alone from this disease. And I will not sit by and watch you put the lives and well-beings of students in jeopardy if I can do something about it. It is your job to make sure that students are safe, to make sure that... So make sure that that is your priority. Our safety at a school should not be prioritized, our safety as a school should be prioritized, not a second thought because people think it's a nuisance to wear masks, or because parents and the school board decide to make it about politics rather than common sense. If you don't want to wear a mask, stay at home. I should not have to fear coming to school because of those of you who are too ignorant and selfish to care about other people's health. Once again, there's absolutely no reason this should even be put up for discussion. Wearing a mask is not the end of the world, and we have a little over month left of school. Stop acting like putting others' health and well-being at risk by not following protocols is your right. There is science and facts behind the COVID protocols. It's not a discussion of who's in control and politics. Don't you dare politicize my safety, because this should not be a debate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we refrain from the clapping? I know that... I'm proud that our students are getting up as well, and it came from themselves, but please refrain from any clapping or cheering, please. What I'd like to do is have Connie Kincaid come up, and then I would like Elena to queue up, so we don't have the long walk. So if you could queue up. Maybe in the second row of chairs behind, and then we'll continue that process. Connie?
My name is Connie Kincaid. I live at 975 W7255 Linden Street in Cedarburg. Last month, an email was sent my way that included the following statement and posed a question, statement. "Upon investigation, it became apparent that the proposed event would be controlled almost entirely, if not exclusively, by public and vocal supporters of two other candidates." In parentheses, "This individual," end parentheses, "was not comfortable with any opponent's supporters controlling such an event, including the questions asked, sound, video recordings, web postings, editing, et cetera." Question: And who would be comfortable with that? My answer: I would. I would. "Last summer, I spoke before all board members present, with the exception of Mr. Goldbeck on the phone and Ms. Netzel, and I stated that our family would do whatever we could to make virtual work. At the start of the fall, I reached out to fellow elementary school PTO presidents and board members and introduced myself. I offered any assistance as we all would be navigating quite a different school year, with families that are virtual and in-person and classroom split in different ways lending support or being inspired by one another's efforts and offering words of praise for those efforts made sense and still makes sense to me. When I was first asked if co-hosting a PTO forum would be of interest, I thought, 'Of course.' That said, it was essential to ask our Parkview Board as well as administration first. My opinion and my vote are not the only one that matter, is not the only one that matters. With all that said, I personally felt comfortable saying yes, because I know several PTO presidents and board members, past and present. Regardless of our individual leanings when it comes to governance, I've yet to meet a PTO board member that believes their voice is meant to be heard the loudest. I can say with certainty that for any one of us to move forward, there needs to be a willingness to trust that there are people within the community, and most certainly on CSD PTO boards, that had sincerely good intentions. If any member of the board believes that our community can go through another election cycle like this past one and come out the better for it, I truly question your ability to discern what is best for our students. I have shared suggestions with several members of the board and administration on ways to allow future board candidates to share information about themselves and answer questions in a way that would not put your parent volunteers under unnecessary and dangerous scrutiny. Tonight, I'm asking that those recommendations be not only considered by the policy committee, but made an item on future agenda open to discussion and voting procedures." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eliana, you're next, and Elias, can you step down?
Could you turn it just like back? Sorry, there was a glare.
Not enough?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. My name's Eliana, and I am a sophomore at CHS. Racism isn't just flat-out saying the N-word or telling a person to go back to where they came from. I'm going to give you a real-life example of racism that has happened in a classroom at CHS this month. A conversation was happening between two students in a business class. The teacher asked the class, "What is something that they need to start a farming business?" Student A said, "We will need Mexicans for the cheap labor." Student B said, "I will get a bus so we can help them cross the border." Now, the room was loud, and I didn't expect the teacher to hear, but still, I was furious. There's also a student at CHS who has experienced racism. Now, this truly breaks my heart. This student has been called a slave, has been told to pick cotton, and been called the N-word, all by white students in this school district. I'm going to switch over to something called casual racism. Can't believe there's something called casual racism. This is stuff that people say or do, and so an example is, you start a sentence with, "I'm not racist," but when you start a sentence with that, that doesn't make it any less offensive. So whatever you're going to say is probably racist, and you shouldn't say it. Another one is, "I'm not racist, I have black friends." No. Just because you have friends of a different ethnic background does not give you a pass to be racist. There is a student at CHS who has a black aunt by marriage, and she feels she has the right to say the N-word. And when I confronted her about it, she was very upset with me because she said she has a pass to say the N-word. This is a student in your school district, by the way. I don't know if I already said that. Also, another example is when a person of a different ethnic background walks into a building and you feel the need to hold your purse, backpack, or wallet tighter, or you need to feel the need to keep looking at them and staring at them. I can't tell you how many times I'm at Out and Out, and I get glares, and people tell me, "What are you doing here? Hmm? Are you sure you belong here?" Yeah. I have 30 seconds left, but I'm gonna quick say this. I want you to think about this, board members. If you have children in Cedarburg High School, how would you feel if every day it takes them 30 minutes to get out of bed because they don't want to go to school because they know they'll get picked on for the way they look? Think about that. Think about how your children would feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Elias, you please come up, and then Andrea Acosta, please queue up.
Hi, my name's Elias, and I have experienced racism at my school and even in my community. I even wrote a narrative in my class to bring awareness to it. And it really... I just want other races and cultures have unique things, and I want people to realize that just you shouldn't be making fun of them just because of their skin or how, what their past is. I want to speak up because I can't imagine kids younger than me experience this and what the pain they could feel. It's just, it's heartbreaking to think that this is happening all over the world, too, and that it's happening even to younger kids than me. And I feel bad for the people that keep on saying the N-word or doing racist things to people just a different color, because I feel like they probably have been experiencing pain at home, or they have been experiencing things that have been affecting them in a certain way, and they're just taking it out on certain people because they don't like their skin color. Thank you. It may have been short, but I just want to bring awareness to this is real, and it's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea, please step up, and Catherine Burrows, please queue up.
Andrea Acosta, W52N244 Pierce Avenue. First, I'd like to say that that is my son and my daughter, and I am so proud of them. For a 12-year-old to be concerned about the pain that someone is in that is saying racist words towards him and other people shows the kind of humanity and compassion that my kids have, and that's something that should be celebrated. To the board, I want to address a few things from last month's meeting. I am disappointed in your silence when you had a roomful of adults that were booing and hissing at people. You made sure to follow the rules of a three-minute timer with a large countdown on an iPad and cutting off the mic, and telling other people in the audience they cannot speak when it's not their turn or you will have them removed. Yet you were silent when there was an embarrassing behavior of unbecoming of adults in this community, let alone at a school board meeting. I had a 16-year-old sitting there terrified to speak because she was scared of what the adults behind her would say. Now, if she doesn't feel safe to speak on her experiences in a public school board meeting, tell me how you can sit up there and tell her to report all her incidences, and they will be handled. She, as well as many other students of color, do not have faith in the board or the system to protect them, and you proved their feelings last month. You failed them with your silence again. If this is how the adults in the community will act in a school board meeting, imagine the conversations that carry home afterwards, overheard by their children, which are then carried right back to school. Hate does not live in a vacuum. It requires allies, those who will look away. And to the board members that respond with, "If racism exists," let me stop your statement right there. You have been told over and over again that it does. Statistically, hate crimes have been on the rise to the highest level in more than a decade. Stop sticking your head in the sand. Again, we are not asking for punishment or zero tolerance. We are asking for education. You have a sophomore in your high school that doesn't even know what the KKK is. You have students that don't know Puerto Rico is a U.S. territory. It has been since 1917, and it has participated in every major U.S. military engagement since World War I. And while you're at it, at least let them know that you can't drive there. So there you have it, history, U.S. government, and geography. It's truly not that difficult to expand your curriculum to include other cultures. Once those cultures are acknowledged and appreciated for their many, many contributions, the ignorance and uneducated comments will lessen and lessen. To those saying that it's ridiculous for me to ask the school to eradicate racism, I have never said that. I'm asking you to be responsible for what has happened and what will continue to happen on school grounds, and the environment that you have created is not conducive to reporting. I am publicly stating that you, the school board, are responsible for the mental health and safety of our students of color during school hours, because I know my children can stand up for themselves in the real world, but they deserve a break from that within our schools and classrooms so they can concentrate on learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine, you are up, and Michael Maher, please queue up. Catherine, you are up. And Michael Maher, please queue up.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Catherine Burrows, W-78-N-418 Ridgeway Lane. I am speaking to you tonight as a mother, an internist, and a pediatrician in regards to the recent proposal to reevaluate the pandemic mitigation measures in our school district. COVID is not improving. According to the New York Times website, as of today, in the last 14 days, hospitalizations are up 17% in the state of Wisconsin alone. Even more noteworthy, the new variants are affecting children more than adults. While other districts are just now going back to in-person learning for the first time, why are we even considering stopping the masks? We all want to go back to normal. This is not the time to let down our guard. Children under 16 years of age are not yet eligible for vaccination with no clear indication if or when they will be. With the lack of a vaccine, non-pharmaceutical interventions such as masks continues to be the best preventive tools. Children are resilient. If a child is told they have to wear a mask, they may not like it, but they'll do it anyways. It's the adults that whine and the adults that complain about wearing a mask. Are masks truly too problematic and too intrusive? Wearing a mask is not a violation of personal rights. It's to protect yourself and others. Do what you want in your own home. At school, please follow the rules to keep your children safe, knowing that a mask is a little more than an annoyance for most people. Would you tell your children it's okay to take off their seatbelt if they think it's annoying? Would you tell your children not to bother looking both ways before they cross the street if they simply didn't want to? Of course you wouldn't. We're the adults. We're the ones our children look to for advice. We need to set the example of what it means to be safe regardless of our personal feelings about that safety measure. We should not relax mask measures for our children indoors or outdoors. Current CDC recommendations state that masks are to be worn in all public events, settings, and gatherings. As of three days ago, the CDC put out guidance specifically for operating youth and summer camps during the COVID season stating that masks and social distancing should be continued. Today, the CDC announced that only fully vaccinated people should go outside without a mask as long as they're in a small group. The CDC is a healthcare agency with scientists, epidemiologists, virologists, doctors, others, whom collectively are smarter than any of us here. They have worked together to develop these recommendations? Why would we in a small town think to ignore that device?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael and Katie Pope, please queue up.
Mike Maher, N-42, I'm sorry, just moved, W-69-N-425, Fox Point Avenue. There is a statement written multiple times in tonight's board packet, and I quote, "The board is responsible for ensuring the safety for all students and staff." End quote. None of you are infectious disease specialists. As an elected official, you have an ethical obligation to follow the guidance of our public health organizations. The County Public Health Department, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, the CDC, and countless others in the medical community all recommend that schools keep their policies in place. The simple acts of wearing a mask, regularly washing hands, and practicing social distancing have allowed the schools in the Cedarburg School District to stay open for the majority of this past year. I see no reason why the CSD should change the practices of staying safe to stay open for the remainder of this school year. The vaccine represents light at the end of this dark tunnel, but it will take time. In Ozaki County, 39% of our residents are fully vaccinated. However, herd immunity is considered 70 to 90% of the population. Kids under 16 can't get the vaccine yet. We are not there. Virtual school has been a huge challenge this year for our family. We would love nothing more than having the opportunity to send our virtual kids back to in-person learning. However, if the school board makes a poor policy decision tonight, it will have us rethinking again our choice of where to send our kids to school next fall. Please do the right thing tonight and do nothing. And I have some time left. So, I did have a comment prepared for item K. I'm gonna read it anyways. I think the issue that I wanted to speak against was pulled from it and is going back to committee, so I guess good choice there. But I'm gonna say it anyways. The change in policy language that will be discussed in tonight, discussed tonight is concerning. Almost always, change in policy language is minor and recommended by NEOLAs, but it definitely appears this is not the case. The language that is going to be modified, if approved, is a pretty important part of checks and balances for the board. Why would these changes even be suggested? In my opinion, someone on this board knows their actions could be held accountable with the existing language, so they are trying to get this changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, we can, we can ask questions or make comments because it's on the agenda.
Yep.
Mike, that was not brought up by any board member, the one that's going back. That was strictly a NEOLA policy. It was not recommended by anyone other than them. They're doing it nationally with their policies.
All right, you're done, Mr. Leach. All right, Katie, you're up. And Jennifer Carley, please queue up.
Hi, my name is Katie Pope, W-53-N-793 Windsor Court in Cedarburg. I am not here tonight to share facts and statistics. I am simply here to appeal to your sense of humanity. My middle schooler has been homebound for four years as she is extremely immunosuppressed as well as immunocompromised. We were told by her medical team that if she contracted COVID, there would be no way she would survive. Because of this, my high schooler has also had to go virtual for this last year. As you can imagine, his mental health is really struggling due to the isolation on top of grieving his sister's terminal diagnosis. He needs to return to school in person, but he will not be able to do so if masks are removed this spring or even next fall, and we will be forced to leave the district. Unfortunately, our circumstance is not rare or unique. There are many families and teachers in the district who have a family member or are themselves high-risk. If masks are removed, these families and teachers will be forced with the same decision. My daughter has special needs along with interstitial lung disease and sensory processing issues. She has been wearing a mask for the last four years since her liver transplant with absolutely no issues or complaints. I believe that if she can do it, we all can. A new study out from MIT once again confirms that masking is the most simple and effective thing we can do to protect others and ourselves. While I know the school's responsibility is to educate and prepare our children for the future, this should most definitely include teaching our children compassion for others. Our community and world will be a better place because of it. All of our children deserve the right to receive a safe education, not just the ones whose parents aren't worried about the pandemic. Have you ever had to be intubated with a breathing tube? Because my daughter has, over 20 times, in fact. And every time we have to take her to the ER, her PTSD kicks in, and she sobs worrying if this is yet another time she will need a breathing tube. Trust me, you do not want to end up that way or watch a family member suffer like that. If the small inconvenience of wearing a mask outweighs protecting your neighbors, then I ask you to put yourself in my place for just one minute. For many families and teachers in the district, we don't have luxury to attend or send our children to school where there are people unmasked. I don't feel it's right for our motto in this community to be Cedarburg Strong if we're not willing to protect our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, please come up. And Jessica Noche, please queue up.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Carley, 1597 Bobalink Avenue, Grafton, Wisconsin. I have two children in the Cedarburg School District, one at Thorson, one at Webster. We chose to move to the district in 2013 at the time of a job relocation exclusively based on the caliber and reputation of the school district. Increasingly, I fear we made the wrong decision. To be candid, we have not ruled out moving. I am here this evening to address two topics that are critical to the health and well-being of all students and of the community as a whole. First, the ongoing mask mandate and other preventative measures related to the ongoing global pandemic. I strongly urge you to retain the mask mandate and associated measures. I urge you to establish protocols for the 21-22 school year closer to the actual start of the next school year. I urge you to be considerate of all students as the pandemic situation is still fluid. At 10 and 13, my children cannot yet be vaccinated. Lack of masks endangers them. Experts are urging us to stay the course. The recent Children's Hospital of Wisconsin article published on April 20th, 2021 stated, "Increase diligence in following public health measures at schools. Wear a mask that consistently covers your mouth and nose at all times." I was disturbed to see the potential action related to contact tracing, social distancing, and quarantine listed. Make no mistake, removing any of these safety measures is not only irresponsible, but it could lead to tragic outcomes. My second topic is related to district policy and is another reason I have become very reluctant to recommend the Cedarburg schools to anyone. The lack of seriousness given to issues raised regarding the experiences of our diverse students repeatedly is patently unacceptable. I work for a Fortune 100 company, and if any of the allegations brought to the attention of this board at prior board meetings were raised in my environment at work, there would be thorough investigation and proactive action. The lack of action seems to suggest that in the bubble of Cedarburg, the goal of top-notch education doesn't apply to students of color, LGBTQ, et cetera. Students who are uninformed about diversity and inclusion, white privilege, or who lack allyship will be less attractive to the top-rated universities and employers. I express my thanks to this district who voted to make the mask mandate and who support virtual learning in 2021. My kids benefited from it in the first semester. Thank you, and I hope you will consider these remarks as you take action going forward.
Thank you. Jessica, please step forward. Teri Schwab, please queue up.
Jessica Noche, N-87-W-6239 Willowbrook Drive, Cedarburg. A few years after I moved to Cedarburg, I had the opportunity to teach in the district. I spent a year as a special educator at Parkview and a year at Webster as well. I am so grateful for those two years that I spent teaching here as I made wonderful professional and personal connections and learned so much from my colleagues. However, when the opportunity came for me to return to the district where I previously worked, I could not pass it up. Not only would I be making significantly higher salary, I would also have the opportunity to grow professionally. And since I've left the Cedarburg School District, I have had continued opportunities through my current district to grow and be recognized and compensated for this growth. I also have had the opportunity to work with several former Cedarburg colleagues who have moved on for the very same reasons that I have. Now that my own children attend Parkview, I have become even more concerned about the climate in this district and how it is contributing to this exodus of highly qualified teaching and support staff. I have concerns that two school board members recently campaigned on the platform of fostering environments that are free from ideological influence and back to basic phonics. But in speaking with one of the candidates, I was unable to hear of the specific examples when teachers in this district have promoted ideological influences. Nor was this candidate aware of the long history of multisensory phonics instruction that is available to students in all buildings throughout this district when it's recommended by the highly qualified reading specialists that determine its necessary intervention. In my current role, I spend most of my time advocating for equitable systems of support for the students in my district. As the wife of a Filipino-American and the mother of two multiracial children, I am extremely passionate about this work. I am also married to a conservative police officer who works in Milwaukee County. We often view the world from very different lenses. We have learned, however, that with patience, respect, and a willingness to keep talking, we can always, always find common ground. That is why, what I'm asking of you tonight. Please know that the pain and passion with which people on all sides of these issues have been speaking is real. Indifference to this pain will get us nowhere. We need to find our way to the middle, to listen, to think, and to listen some more and make our decisions based on what matters most, our kids. On that, I know we can agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Teri, please come up. Donna McEligot, please queue up.
Teri Schwab, W-75-N-824, Tower Avenue in Cedarburg. The Cedarburg Education Association is requesting that for the continued health and safety of the district's staff and students, that masks continue to be required on school grounds throughout the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. According to the CDC website, regardless of the level of community transmission, it is critical that schools use layered prevention strategies. Five key prevention strategies are essential to safe delivery of in-person instruction and help to prevent COVID-19 transmission in schools. These include: universal and correct use of masks, physical distancing, handwashing, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine when needed. The CDC states, "Schools providing in-person instruction should prioritize two prevention strategies as their topmost areas." These include: universal and correct use of masks that should be required by all. Physical distancing should be maximized to the greatest extent as possible. The CDC acknowledges that all prevention strategies provide some level of protection, and layered strategies implemented at the same time provide the greatest level of protection. Schools should adopt prevention strategies to the largest extent practical, with a layered approach being essential. The CDC states that the core principle for the mask requirement is that masks should be worn at all times by all people in all school facilities, with certain exceptions for certain people or for certain settings such as eating or drinking. Masks should be required in all classrooms and non-classroom settings, including hallways, school offices, restrooms, gyms, auditoriums, et cetera. Mask policies for all students, teachers, and staff set the expectation that people will use masks throughout the school. Schools should encourage modeling of correct and consistent mask use by school leaders, local leaders, including yourselves, and others respected in the community. In addition, the CDC states, "School administrators working with local public health officials should assess the level of community transmission to understand the burden of disease in the community." The higher the level of community transmission, the more likely that the COVID vaccine, or COVID, um, disease will be introduced into the school facility from the community, which could lead to in-school transmission if layered prevention strategies are not in use. As of April 22nd, the Washington-Ozaki Public Health Department lists Ozaki County with a high burden and a high case status. Because of this, we implore you to keep the mask requirement in place in the Cedarburg School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, you're up. Laura Gall, please queue up.
Good evening. My name is Donna McEligot, W-59-North380, Hilbert, Cedarburg. So, what's the benefit of changing the mask policy before the school year ends without any new medical guidance from institutions like the CDC? The CDC has not changed its stance on wearing masks indoors among the unvaccinated. The pandemic is not over. Not even all adults have been vaccinated, let alone our children. Neither the state of Wisconsin, Ozaki County, the U.S. pediatric medical community, or virologists encourage indoor gatherings without masks. We all know that if we do a little by wearing a mask, we all win a lot. It's not the time to sub- It's not the time to substitute our desire to get back to normal with off-topic reports on masking and skip an easy, common-sense, low-cost, medically-approved preventative measure. Even area businesses use plastic register shields, employ mask policies, and ask customers to use masks. Why then should our children, teachers, staff, and the most vulnerable in our community deserve less than what we do at the Pigg, Costco, Kohl's, or TJ Maxx? A PBS report last Friday stated that past COVID cases among children were typically less serious, but now that's changing because of the UK variant. This variant is spreading rapidly, more transmissible, and becoming widespread. Tragically today, we read of a first grader in Marshall, Minnesota, dying of COVID with no pre-existing health issues, the third child to die of COVID there. As we head into allergy season for many, why would we want our school environment to be mask optional, free for children and adults to sneeze and cough and spray saliva that could easily be captured by a mask? I've read concerns about autistic children unable to wear masks. So let's step up to help them and others by wearing a mask. I've read of oxygen deprivation. Doctors, nurses, dentists, airline staff, and NBA stars routinely mask up with no ill effects. Public safety measures, especially in schools, should reflect the best of U.S. science, not agendas like those posted in a local intel report. At this time, we need to continue safe school policies similar to local store policies and not play politics. Without life, there is no liberty or pursuit of happiness, like seat belts, speed limits, and stop signs. We follow safety guidelines to help each other. Because we care, we use car seats for children. Masks are not child abuse. As a former director of a public community center serving thousands in Houston, I oversaw policies, and I know people expect public officials to maintain safety first and foremost, regardless of political affiliation, especially in a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're over the board limit for public comment, which is 30 minutes. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion. We extended by 60 minutes, but with the number of people that want to speak here, I would ask that we limit it to agenda items since we have to later talk about mask and reentry.
Can we leave the people that signed up to talk about whatever is on here? I didn't go through there.
There's so many people here, I'd really like to make sure that anybody that wants to talk about the item we're going to possibly vote on later gets a chance to speak.
Second.
Okay. So the motion again. Rick, can you tell us?
We extend the time limit, which we're already like 20 minutes over, by another 60 minutes, but it be for agenda items. So anybody wishing to speak on anything that's on our agenda would speak so that we can get all these people to get a chance to speak. I want to hear what they have to say.
Motion and second. Any further discussion, clarification?
Just a question. I think I get your point, Rick, and I think it's a good one, but people might have come to this meeting at 6 o'clock, and it's 8:30, and then we pull the rug out from them, whatever their topic is. Hopefully, most of the topics have been about masks or racism, things like that. I'd like to see that continue just because they've spent several hours here already. I just think we have to put in the time tonight to listen to them and hear them.
How many are on the list there?
We have a total of 37, and we just finished with 14.
What if we, what if we, what if we, people that signed up, include them in the, in the list of people?
Okay. I'd be willing to change it, too. We'll give 60 minutes. Anyone that signed up previously, we'll let them speak, but then anything after that to the agenda items so that we can make sure everybody gets a chance.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
All right. Everyone clear?
Oh, I'll second that.
Actually, it doesn't need a consensus. It was out, it's just if everybody's in consensus, we can go with the motion.
Okay. You're, all right. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're going to go a few more, and then we're going to take a brief recess, hopefully, to let everyone use the facilities if they need to. Laura, you are up, and Deb and Gracia, please queue up.
My name is Laura Gall. I live at West 70 North 1014 Hampton Court. This is the first time I have spoken at a school board meeting in the 38 years I have lived at my stated address. As a retired surgical nurse with over 30 years of experience and a previous member of the AORN, a nursing organization that does ongoing medical research to improve nursing practice and infection control in the operating room, I feel compelled to speak up for the children and their families in our school district regarding the mask mandate and social distancing requirements that currently exist at our schools. When the pandemic first began, the lack of knowledge about the COVID-19 justified erring on the side of caution. That excuse has vanished. It became clear long ago that the virus is less dangerous to children than the flu, and keeping schools fully open poses minimal risk of spreading infection. As a nurse in the operating room, I wore a mask every day at work my whole career. We wore surgical masks in the OR to protect us, not the patient, from blood and body fluids that might splash up on our faces. We worked in a climate-controlled environment of 68 degrees Fahrenheit or less, 30% humidity, and every square inch of room air was completely exchanged 18 times every hour. We changed to a fresh, new mask every two hours. Two hours of use is maximum usage time of mask due to the fact that our human mouth is the most bacteria-laden part of the body, and our warm, moist breath provides the perfect environment for bacterial and virupathogenic growth. Our children are not as lucky as OR personnel. They are currently required to wear a mask for seven to eight hours per day or longer in suboptimal conditions, even outside for recess. I frequently see children and adults touching the mask with their hands where they breathe, and it makes me very concerned. They often then touch many objects around them, potentially spreading harmful pathogens to the next person that touches that same object. The coronavirus is 0.12 microns in size, a very small virus, and passes readily through all types of surgical masks I see being used. Medical professionals and the CDC knew this at the start of our two-week quarantine to flatten the curve. It is an airborne virus, much like the common cold. Imposing mask-wearing and social distancing on our children by fear-mongering neurotic adults is hurting our children in every way: emotionally, socially, and physically. Our children have one shot at getting their education and having opportunities for social learning. They have already lost one year of their education in many ways, and it needs to stop. Make the mask mandate and social distancing optional. Let each family decide what the best way to handle their health is. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please refrain from that? We're going to have to suspend the public comment meeting. So I know everyone's really passionate about this. We just need to respect each other, please. All right. Deb, you're up, and Erin Schmidt, you're on deck, please.
My name is Deb Ingracia. I live at 1510 Cedar Creek Parkway in the town of Cedarburg. I'm here to request that you make masks optional in the classrooms. Masking should be a parental choice. You're the leaders we depend on to make tough decisions in the best interest of our children. Please do not wait to see what nearby districts are doing or politicized government entities are recommending. We don't need outside entities telling us as parents how we should think or care for ourselves and our children. We're capable of critical thinking. If only we dig deeper than the colorful charts erroneously filled with half-truths designed to further the narrative of fear. "My body, my choice" is a long-running phrase, and it applies very well here. Masks create health concerns, both mental and physical. They limit social and emotional engagement, which is critical to the physical and mental well-being of all, but especially children. Recent studies published in the medical journals, JAMA-Pediatrics, and Lancet, highlight the negative impacts of daily mask-wearing in children. Several studies with adults show that after just one hour of wearing a mask, oxygen saturation levels go down and heart rates go up. What does that mean for a child stuck in them for seven hours a day? In Ozaki County, the data I looked at today, the seven-day average for new cases is low at a count of eight in a population of 90,000 people. Based on these facts, masks are no longer necessary as a mandate. There appears to be some agreement behind closed doors. There are doctors' offices allowing staff and reps to take off their masks once they're in the lunchrooms and offices out of sight patients, out of the sight of patients. Teachers, I hear in some places, take off their masks as soon as they're away from students, hidden in lounges. It's become optics and not safety. I won't share names, but many adults publicly favoring the mandates are posting pictures of themselves mask-free, socializing at parties, bars, events, on vacations with other people. It's, again, not fair. They're putting, they're allowing themselves the freedom, but they're wanting to pin their children to have mask mandates. We've been told that kids are used to them. I wish I could share all the stories of the children who disagree with that statement. Every day, everywhere, kids are fidgeting with them, pulling them down, showing signs of fatigue and headaches that can be attributed to shallower breathing, touching their mouths, nose, and eyes with germy fingers, often breathing in and out of the same dirty mask filled with germs day after day. Talk about a health hazard. Gross. Our children deserve better than this. You're elected to do what is right and best for Cedarburg students and their families. There's no one-size-fits-all with masks. Please make them optional and give the choice back to the parents.
Thank you. The next one. Can we please refrain from that? We'll have to suspend the meeting, do a recess, perhaps a motion to adjourn. We just want to keep moving along without the cheering and the clapping, please. Moving on to Erin Schmidt and Boyd Miller, you're on deck.
Erin Schmidt, 1680 Swallow Drive. I want to commend the board for the excellent job the district has done in curtailing the spread of coronavirus in our schools and communities, but please do not risk offsetting the progress from these efforts with little more than a month left in the school year. Making decisions regarding the health and safety of others is difficult. I have a degree in medical microbiology, a medical degree, and have treated patients with COVID-19 in Wisconsin and Iowa, and I myself would not feel comfortable making this decision alone. I would consult the experts in the field for guidance, and those experts have given such guidance. The WHO, CDC, Wisconsin Department of Health, and the Washington Ozaki Public Health Departments all unanimously recommend continuing mandatory masking, social distancing, contact tracing, and quarantining in schools through the end of the school year. They make these recommendations based on the best scientific evidence available to date. So what information are you viewing to suggest that these policies need to be reevaluated with a month left in the school year? Misinformation is a dangerous problem, like saying COVID is less dangerous than the flu. From social media to mainstream news, we are flooded with biased agenda and falsehoods. Unfortunately, a purely medical issue like the global pandemic is not immune to this problem. In a communication with a board member, I was told that there are numerous studies for and against masking. When asked to provide these numerous studies against masking, I was sent a single article that claims masks cause low oxygen levels, high carbon dioxide levels, are ineffective at preventing the spread of disease, and even that masks cause infections. The trouble is, when I looked at all 67 sources cited in the article, not a single one was a scientific study to support these claims. It is misinformation like this that is shaping the opinions of many in our society, including some on the school board. Critical analysis of information has never been more important. All of these claims are completely false, and the real peer-reviewed scientific data is clear. Droplet dispersion and epidemiologic studies confirm that masks are safe and work to prevent the spread of disease, and they work best if everyone wears them. Optional masking is not sufficient. Choosing to mask yourself, not to mask yourself directly, puts others at risk. This should not be an emotional or a personal decision, but a medical one. I believe strongly in personal freedom, but we all concede a small amount of freedom to ensure the safety of others, such as not smoking in airplanes and stopping at red lights. Masking does not restrict freedom, but rather promotes it. Uncontrolled spread of coronavirus will limit our freedom more than any mask. It is because of masking that we have been able to maintain the freedom of in-person schooling all year. Some people do not fear COVID-19, and I say that must be a nice luxury. But not everyone is afforded that same luxury, and we need to consider those at risk when making these decisions. Removing the mask mandate now will restrict the freedom of those at high risk or with family members at high risk by not allowing them to safely attend in-person school. This affects students as well as the district teachers and staff and their loved ones. I implore you to wait until the vaccine is available to all who want it so that they can actually make the choice for themselves what level of risk they have to accept to attend school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Boyd, you're up, and Julie Mossberg, please queue up.
Are we going to take a break at some point? My kidney stone is telling me I've drank too much.
Oh, all right. Well, let's take a break after this.
Thank you.
My name is Boyd Miller. Address 444 Cedar Point Avenue, Cedarburg. I am a pediatrician here in Cedarburg, and I work for Children's Hospital Clinic. I want to start by posing a question. Why has the science around COVID looked so messy? Expert opinions vary and recommendations change weekly. The answer is COVID is a new virus, a new disease. At first, we had no tests for it. We had no medication for it. We had no past experience. So the first recommendation was, "Don't wear a mask. They won't help." The reason was, the virus was just starting to arrive from Europe and Asia. We also knew that the masks that were available to the general public are not generally effective at preventing the person who wears them. Also, there was a shortage of masks for first responders and medical personnel. But then science learned more information. We developed a test that could identify it, and then we found that the virus actually was widespread. It was already here. And these next two points are the most important ones I'll make tonight. We found that about 50% of transmissions happen from people without any symptoms. We also discovered that masks are most effective when worn by the person who is infected, preventing the infected person from projecting the virus into the environment. They are much less effective at preventing illness for the person who's wearing them. Another way of putting this is you wear a mask to protect others around you more than you wear it to protect yourself. This is why allowing masks to be a personal choice is misguided and not supported by science. The risk of that decision is not borne by the individual. It will be borne by the people around them and the community at large. So with the new information, the recommendation changed. It was everyone should wear a mask. Now, one year in, there is overwhelming evidence that mask-wearing definitely reduces the spread of the virus, hospitalizations, and death. Quickly turning to just children, yes, it is less likely they get it, and when they do get it, it generally is less severe. But it is not zero. They account for 15% of all of the COVID infections thus far. We also recently learned that there are new variants emerging that appear to be more contagious, and there are surges in places that have relaxed their safety measures too soon, specifically Brazil, India, and now Michigan. Last week, 70 children were admitted to the hospital in Michigan, which is a record beyond their peak last fall. We also know children admitted to the hospital, one-third of them will require ICU care, so it is not totally harmless to children. To end, I would say overwhelmingly, the medical experts are telling us to stay the course with masking and other safety measures until we have vaccination of children and we have a better understanding of virus variants.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Doctor, is it possible, you said that there was overwhelming scientific data. Can you send us some of those studies?
Sure. It'll be a long list, but I'll send them.
Because it's just very interesting. I'm getting them on both sides, and I've been reading both sides, and my daughter takes her MCAT in a couple weeks, so she tells me all these different things they learned in college about looking at peer-reviewed and everything else, and I'm not finding them on either side that really hold a lot of weight. So that's, I'd love to see some that have been peer-reviewed and done the test of time because I'm not sure it's happening.
Sure. I'll just respond that only peer-reviewed studies will get cited by the CDC. There are all kinds of fringe studies that people can pull up and talk about, but they need to be peer-reviewed and supported by their peers, and of those, there are numerous.
Okay. Thank you.
Doctor, are you saying there's a peer-reviewed study that proves effectiveness of masks? That's what we'd like to see, if you say there is one.
Oh, yeah. I'll be happy. Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion, take a brief recess?
I'll make a motion. We take a 10-minute recess? 15-minute?
Ten. Second 10.
Ten minutes.
I second 10 minutes.
You second 10? Okay. 10.
All right. And just to be clear, that extension of time is stopped right now, and we'll reconvene that, correct? Correct?
Yep. Yep. We have 40 minutes left of that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and we'll I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and we'll start off with Julie Mossberg. Please approach the microphone, and Jennifer Meldman, please get on deck.
Okay. Ready? Ready. Good evening. My name is Dr. Julie Mossberg. I live at 1563 Whitetail Lane in Cedarburg. I am also a practicing pediatrician in Cedarburg, and I have a sophomore at Cedarburg High School and a seventh grader at Webster. Mass work. My other colleagues have already spoken to that. First, I wanted to say, though, that I am very thankful to be in a school district that has managed to successfully have an in-person learning option since the beginning of the school year. I strongly believe that our success has been because of our strong mitigation strategies that have been in place, including our mandatory masks. We have ample evidence that masks work, both to protect each other and ourselves. And, you know, this remains part of the recommendations from the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. At this point, many of our staff are now vaccinated, and some of our sixteen-year-olds and up are starting to become vaccinated, but the majority of our students do not have this option yet for that layer of protection. So between the lack of vaccination, the still-high level of virus that's in the community, and the new variants that are starting to circulate, and the unknowns around those, really makes it critical that we continue to have our current mitigation strategies in place, including the mask mandate. Hopefully, we will be at a much better position this coming fall. So I do urge the board to continue to keep in place our current mitigation factors, including the mask mandate. Please just help keep our families and students safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Meldman, please step up to the mic, and Brooke Napawaki, please get on deck.
My name is Jennifer Meldman. I live at 300 Bobalink Avenue, Grafton, Wisconsin, 53024. Good evening, members of the board. I am here to urge you to maintain all safety procedures related to mitigating the spread of COVID, including mask-wearing inside and outside, social distancing, quarantining, and contact tracing. What we are doing now is working. Vast numbers of virtual students have returned to in-person learning because they trust and feel comfortable with the district's current safety policies. There are less than thirty days left, or there are exactly thirty days left of the school year. Let's finish strong. Besides all of the legitimate and serious medical risks that have been presented to you tonight, I would like to, as one speaker said, try to find some common ground. What else do we have at stake besides the medical implications of changing our policies now? First, a change in policy will lead some parents to switch their in-person children back to a virtual setting. This impacts the quality of instruction for everyone. Teachers will need to divide their attention and time planning to accommodate learners in both settings. They cannot achieve the highest quality of education that Cedarburg is so proud of, even with their Herculean efforts. Second, forward testing is not complete. Spring MAB testing has yet to begin, and at the high school, AP exams run from May 3rd through May 28th. We don't want preparation for AP testing to be disrupted by an increase in virtual students or teachers and students out sick with COVID when it could have been prevented. The high test scores that the district is accustomed to and so proud of will be jeopardized. Next, wonderful experiences are happening in our schools, giving students the back-to-normal feeling. An in-person promis plan, in-person graduations, a change in our mitigation practices risks canceling or changing these events significantly and reduces the number of students who may be able to participate. According to the information in the district newsletter last week, only forty-seven percent of the staff are fully vaccinated. A high percentage are waiting on their second dose. While most importantly, we don't want to risk the health and safety of our staff, to maintain a common ground, a common goal, to maintain the highest quality of education, please maintain all COVID safety policies. Let's finish strong and safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke, please approach the microphone, and Dr. Noah Janet, please get on deck.
My name is Brooke Napawaki. I live at 1132 Canary Lane, Grafton. I have two children. I have a second grader and a fifth grader at Thorson. I work in this community, and I've been an active volunteer in the district. I want to say thank you to our educators. We had our children in virtual as well as in-person, and our teachers, administration, and support staff did a great job. We thank you for keeping our kids safe and engaged in their learning. I'm here today because I want to ask the board to commit to keeping the mask mandate this school year, but also until all students can be vaccinated. They have the choice to be vaccinated. I understand that this might require that high schoolers maybe have a no-mask mandate earlier than elementary next school year, but thinking beyond just this school year to give parents and kids some certainty. I'm asking this for three main reasons. We've had some great physicians already talk about physical health, so I'm not going to talk about that. Mental health. We had a student talk today, this evening, about mental health. My children shared that they worry that they won't be able to go to in-person school if we don't have masks. They shared with me that they're afraid they're going to get someone sick. They see public health leaders say that they should wear a mask. They want to wear a mask. They want to be part of the solution. And then finally, the financial health of our district. I think physical health and mental health are more important, but financial health is also something that we need to think about in our district. I'm aware of multiple families, including my own, if we do not require masks for our kids until they can get vaccinated, we will think about leaving the district. We will think about going to a different school, or homeschooling, or doing something else with our kids. We need that revenue, most likely, in this district. That impacts the revenue of the district, and it impacts home values, families coming into the district, and families leaving the district. So with that, I want you to commit to keeping the mask requirement at all district schools until all students have the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Noah, please approach the mic, and Kate Caspak.
Hello, Noah Janet, 400 Lyndale Drive, Cedarburg. We all believe something, and I by no means intend to cause harm to those that are led to their beliefs by others. A word about where I come from. I ended up in pre-med, major biology, minor chemistry. At the university, I started sociology, education, and teaching, then medical school residency and psychiatry. Now I'm an attending psychiatrist on the crisis stabilization unit, COVID-19 unit in Milwaukee. I'm a Cedarburg School District parent. I believe that what I will say here tonight matters for the students in the Cedarburg community. These things may have bearing on our thoughts, but regardless of my feelings, what I say or what is said in this room this evening will not change the need for masking for safety, safe distancing, et cetera, because these behaviors are an extension of a medical pandemic, and so won't be wished, voted, or ignored away. Any leader who states otherwise has misplaced their leadership, their sense of reality of evolving science, the goodwill and responsibility to our children, the safety of the heroes that work here, or the multitude of contacts that made by extension to family and community. The moral, legal, financial, and health requirements for the Cedarburg School District necessitate that we cannot, even if we acted against better judgment, stray from this necessary path. It is necessary to cast a wary eye at those who stand to benefit from this controversy, as well as future disagreements and anxiety for which flows directly to our kids, by the way. These are the attorneys of all our legal cases and politicians whose intention it is to carve out emotional constituencies for their future success, for this controversy on our backs in the communities. Tell those leaders at the polls, we are not lost. Improving the risk to our children and community involves a personal commitment to safety, working with health system engineers to improve ventilation, updating technology to improve learning and social abilities with increased student interconnectedness, roundtable study groups, et cetera, increased COVID testing to include, for example, you can include twenty people in the same sample of testing. If the test is negative for COVID, then the whole group is negative with one test. Fresh masks should be available, of course. Vaccination.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, please approach the mic, and Katie Kowalski, please get on deck.
Good evening. Kate Casperzak, W78 N375 Prairie View Road. First, I want to recognize and applaud our school administrators, staff, and, most importantly, teachers for the mitigation efforts that they worked tirelessly to put into place to protect our children. To that sentiment, my first question would be, why would we throw that all away when we have thirty days left of the school year? Although some of this information may be redundant, I think it is worth repeating. Facts: data is non-negotiable, COVID is real, and it is a threat to children. To date, 3.7 million American children have gotten COVID-19, according to the statistics compiled by the American Academy of Pediatrics. And this is only what has been reported. The number is most likely astronomically higher. Also important to note, children are more likely to be spreaders because they experience less symptoms. There is no debate here. These are facts. Another alarming fact is that cases in children are increasing in Wisconsin over the past few weeks. According to an article written by the Children's Hospital of Wisconsin on April 20th, new and more infectious variants, combined with the loosening of mitigation strategies, have contributed to outbreaks linked to extracurricular activities. Wisconsin is seeing more cases in the under-18 category than any other age group. Currently undergoing investigation in Wisconsin are almost 470 outbreaks in educational settings. Additional facts worth highlighting: severe sickness in children from COVID-19 can and is happening. The Journal of the American Medical Association indicates that 11.7% of pediatric patients were hospitalized, and of that percentage, 31.1% were sick enough to require intensive care. These are children. These could be our children if we do not continue to keep measures in place to protect them. Additionally, the research is continuing on the long-term effects in children who have contacted COVID-19. By removing these measures, you may be adversely affecting the health of a child for the rest of their lives. This will bring me to my next question. What are the legal implications of removing the mask mandate and mitigation efforts? The immunity statute for the schools is not airtight. Considering removal of the mask mandate is opening the district to potential litigation and legal expense if they choose not to comply and follow CDC and Department of Health guidelines. This will also lead to increases in insurance premiums, which are already at a large expenditure. I understand that when it comes to people's businesses and livelihoods, there's a balance that should be considered when it comes to COVID prevention, but we're talking about keeping our kids, teachers, and staff safe at school. Do the right thing and stay the course for the rest of the school year. You have nothing to gain and everything to lose by moving forward with these changes, and you will and should be held responsible for any harm that comes as a result. Lastly, I would like to quickly respond to the sentiment expressed last night on Fox 6 News. Your choice as a parent ends when the health and safety of every child, teacher, and staff member at the school begins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Katie, please approach the mic, and Elizabeth Charlin, please get on deck.
Katie Kowalski, W65 N374 Westlon Avenue. Members of the board, thank you very much for allowing public comment here tonight. I would like to start by saying thank you to our students, teachers, administrators, support staff, custodial staff, administrative assistants, district nurse, and families for working together this year to provide students with instruction during what may be one of our most challenging years. I am a second-grade teacher at Thorson, and I am co-teaching the second graders across the district that are virtual and in-person learners at Thorson. I am here to represent the teachers you see here tonight, along with many others. We would like to see the same policies and procedures stay in place for the remainder of the school year. With only thirty days left, we are hoping to allow students to stay in their current learning environments and to end the year with no changes to the precautions we have in place. New changes bring new procedures needing to be taught, especially at the elementary buildings. And at this point in the school year, we would like to wait to see any new changes. For our students who have been in-person all year, for our students who have just recently returned after a year of not being in our schools, for our virtual students, for our families, and for all of our staff, we are hoping the policies and procedures can stay in place for the remainder of this school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, please approach the mic, and Matthew Dillinger, please get on deck.
I'm Elizabeth Charlin. I live at 1602 Skyline Drive, Cedarburg. I'm coming to you again as a concerned parent and Cedarburg citizen. While the bridge, the divide, and break the silence in the burbs, social justice groups continue to ask people of color to share how they are victims of racism in our community, I'm here to say that neither myself, a Hispanic woman, nor my children have experienced racism in the district, nor did I experience racism attending Menominee Falls Schools from first through twelfth grade as a Chapter 220 student who was bused from the north side of Milwaukee. These two social justice groups continue to demand an anti-racism agenda, which includes hiring a full-time equity director, having staff complete implicit racial bias training, new race-based hiring policies, and a top-to-bottom curriculum audit done through the lens of equity. However, the foundation of these requests is critical race theory, which is the idea that United States is, was, and always has been a fundamentally racist country, and that all of our institutions, including schools, are designed to maintain a white supremacy. It's oppressors versus oppressed, and critical race theory assumes racism is present everywhere and always. If this sounds divisive and anti-American, it's because it is. The terms diversity, equity, and inclusion are often used instead. Those who question this narrative are often called racist, toxic, or fragile. If critical race theory is allowed to take hold in Cedarburg schools, it will fundamentally transform the district in negative ways. I'd like to ask the board, do you support swapping out our current American history curriculum for the New York Times 1619 Project, which asserts America's founding was not marked by the signing of the Declaration in 1776, but rather the first arrival of slaves in Jamestown in 1619? Chicago public schools are already teaching this. Do you support eliminating school resource officers? Portland and Minneapolis schools have already done that. Do you support racially segregated Zoom calls for parents? The Madison Metropolitan School District did this last week. I applaud Mr. Bougnaki and the board for their commitment to an environment free of bigotry, discrimination, and prejudice for all. When incidents of racism do occur, they need to be dealt with seriously, harshly, and consistently. Let's not let the district be led down the dark and divisive path of racialism and hate. Other districts already have, and we can see where it's led. Schools that have adopted critical race theory have taken these highly-charged political convictions and are teaching them to children as if they are uncontested facts. Let's cultivate love and kindness in the hearts of our students and continue our pursuit of excellence in Cedarburg schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please refrain from the clapping and cheering, please. Matthew, you're up, and Stacy Wilkie, please get on deck.
Hello. Can you hear me all right? All right. Thank you. Yes. All right. Fellow board members, thank you for your hard work to provide our children with safe, high-quality education. I understand that you are under a lot of pressure.
Can you state your name and address for the record? Sorry. Can you start it? Time over.
Sure. My reluctance to state my name and address should tell you all you need to know about this debate. I'm Matt Dillinger. I live in North... I live at North eighty-eight, North ninety-nine, West seven two eight four Kingston Court. I have three kids in Parkview. Like most health professionals, I am obligated to tell you that the official position of my employer is to encourage mask-wearing and distancing to slow the spread of COVID-19. However, as a concerned parent, I am morally obligated to tell you that restricting the normal behavior of healthy individuals is unethical. Much of what I'm about to say is acknowledged by the CDC and backed up by decades of published, peer-reviewed research. I'll be happy to share my references with the board. Public masking in places like the classroom do not and cannot perform their intended function. I've reviewed the primary literature on public masking, and I have found that these policies are not justified by sound evidence. Yes, pro-masking publications do exist, but the evidence on benefits is lacking. There is no scientific consensus on masking to prevent COVID-19. Originally, the masks were justified as a barrier for respiratory droplets. We now know, as was referenced earlier by the MIT study, which is not a study, it's a model, that the virus primarily spreads through aerosols that accumulate indoors and are too small to be blocked by anything other than good ventilation. Even with the benefit of the doubt, the best one can expect from public masking is a modest and by my judgment insignificant slowing of the spread. Slowing the spread does not stop the spread. Eventually, everyone is exposed. The Wisconsin mask mandate went into effect last August. Last November, we saw clear exponential growth in COVID-19 cases, and the Cedarburg schools had to close temporarily to accommodate isolation and quarantine guidelines. This was triggered by seasonal effects, which promoted the indoor accumulation of aerosolized particles. It had nothing to do with the presence or absence of masks. Towards the end of November, the growth rate of cases diminished rapidly. This phenomenon was a direct result of recovered individuals in Wisconsin acquiring natural immunity and impeding the spread. It had nothing to do with masks. The original justification for restrictions no longer exists. You can see this for yourself with the Wisconsin DHS website. Small fluctuations in caseloads do not necessarily indicate another wave. We are currently operating on panic and fear, and I'm wondering how history will judge our society when we place the burden of our fears on our children. There are numerous risks to wearing masks for extended periods of time, some of them mentioned. They accumulate pneumonia-causing bacteria that naturally occur in the respiratory tract. They impede normal breathing, which can affect CO2 and O2 saturation. They shed potentially harmful chemicals and fabric particles that our children inhale. They interfere with the physical and mental development of small children. They cause skin rashes and acne, and perhaps most salient to the board, they interfere with communication and socialization. The COVID gap in learning is self-evidently related to restrictions like masking. These CDC guidelines are not laws. That is why they use the word "should." They are suggestions. If you visit CDC.gov, you will find that we are all CDC rulebreakers. Here are some examples. If you left your lunch out for two hours, you violated CDC guidelines. If you do not exercise twice a week, you are violating CDC guidelines. If you drink more than two drinks a day, you are violating CDC guidelines. If you enter a public hot tub without sharing, you violated CDC guidelines.
Thank you.
It's in the rights of our children, who are paying all the costs and none of the demands.
Thank you, Matthew.
I do have a question, though. You said you're a medical professional. What is that? What do you do in the medical profession?
I'm an epidemiologist, PhD level.
Oh, university, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Stacy, please approach the mic, and Taylor, please get on deck.
My name is Stacy Wilkie, and I live at 2429 Deerfield Court. I'm here tonight as a unified voice of all parents who wish to be the only ones to give power and consent on behalf of their children, which of course should be every single responsible and loving parent on the planet. We must all honor ourselves in doing what is right for our kids as individuals, not as a collective group. I've lived in Cedarburg for nearly 20 years, and as recently as a year ago, I could never imagine leaving. I love this community. It's filled with caring, neighborly, kind-hearted people who look out for one another and truly love where they live. As a community and as a district, we must stop allowing anything to divide us. We must agree that we are all allowed our individual liberty and freedom of choice. So I stand here tonight to ask, please make masks a choice. The state said there is no health emergency, and further, it's unlawful and unconstitutional to maintain anything under a health emergency, as again, there is no health emergency. I'm not here to debate the reasons for or against masks. I'm here tonight as a mom and as an American, and those are my two most powerful credentials. We must empower one another to do what's best for our individual kids, and we must support one another in respecting an individual's decision. No one knows my child better than I do, no one. Again, I'm here to demand that every parent be the only ones who ever have consent over our kids. We must teach our kids to stand up for what we believe in. When something's wrong, our bodies tell us. When we know something is wrong, we must stand up and we must not comply. Speaking up is hard, and tonight, I'm choosing my heart because I'm choosing my child. I'm listening to my child. She deserves a school experience that she's comfortable with, and every single child deserves the same. We are all the bosses of ourselves and our bodies, and we should never let our kids ever think otherwise. More than that, they should never be treated differently or discriminated against for proudly taking good care of their physical and mental health and their individuality. You all took this position to serve the community, to represent the community, and to represent us. We are here telling you, make masks a choice. Do the right thing and don't parent our children. Empower parents to decide what's right for their kids. Use common sense, have courage, make masks a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor, please step to the mic, and Tom Hartling, please get on deck.
I'm Kristin Bork, 1339 Cedar Creek Parkway. I'm reading this on the behalf of a seventh-grade student at Webster. I think that students should not be forced to wear masks for many reasons. First, I think and have seen where teachers are much more worried about their students making sure that their masks are pulled up even just over their nose, more than their mental health or even the education. I've had many times where my teachers have stopped their teaching and even kicked kids out of the class just because of masks. It shows how much of a distraction it is and how it is ruining kids' education. Second, it's been really hard for a lot of kids to learn because we haven't seen half of your teachers' faces, which is so wrong because we have known them for almost a year, and it just ruins your relationship with them, and then it impacts their learning because you don't know what they look like. To add on, kids and teachers have to wear a mask for seven or six or seven hours a day, including classes like gym, and even walking around the school is exhausting, and I think we can all agree with that. The masks ruin your immune system because you can't breathe fresh air. So if we gave people the choice, students would be so tired and could relax and have a better learning experience while staying healthy. This year even more, I've seen so much bullying and fighting between peers. I've seen and have had this happen to me where kids have stopped talking or being friends with someone just because they wouldn't want to wear their masks or they believed in something different. So if we make masks an option, kids couldn't yell at each other because it would be their choice, and it would eliminate so much extra drama that kids already have to go through. Finally, my parents know me so much better than the school district, so they should be able to decide what is and isn't best for me. I hope you put this into consideration because from a student's perspective, I believe that this is the right choice for myself, for myself and my school. Since I have a minute and 20 seconds left, I'm going to add a few things. My question is, what is the reason in keeping masks at this point? Anyone that wants to receive the vaccine has had the chance to. I've seen so many that are fighting to keep masks out at school functions, so many that are fighting to keep masks, they're out on the weekend at school, at social functions, posting photos on social media maskless, sending kids on playdates and sports maskless. Many are picking and choosing which CDC guidelines that they're going to follow. I ask you, what is the goal? What is the benchmark? Why do the goalposts keep moving? Please, it's time to remove these masks off of our kids' faces.
Thank you, Tom. Please approach the mic, and Mary Jo Canham, you're on deck.
Tom Hartling, West fifty-five North, seven fifty Cedar Ridge Drive, Cedarburg, and I'm also a teacher in the district. I don't envy your position on this board. It reminds me of my days of roughing soccer. Luckily, you don't have to make a quick snap decision like a referee. You have the ability to delve into some of the impacts of your mask decision prior to making it. I would like to share just one perspective connecting to a possible impact on learning. This year, I've had the opportunity to teach in a blended classroom since late November. In November, the blend of digital learners and in-school learners was about 50/50. Currently, the blend has shifted to nearly all in-school learners, just two digital learners have left, are still there. Some of the parents and students that had previously selected digital learning confided in me that the successes of our current mitigation procedures impacted their decisions to return to in-school instruction. I am concerned that a change in our current mitigation procedures would cause many students to return to digital learning from both my class and others. How would the schools handle a significant number of students shifting to digital learning? Would each class become blended? Would we shift students to digital-specific classes and in-school classes? At this time, are we ready to make these shifts without a pause? In conclusion, a decision this big shouldn't be done quickly. Please listen to all the perspectives, contemplate the impacts, and then make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo, please approach the mic, and Jessica Tippemper, please get on deck.
Mary Jo Canham, N seven eight, W eight two two zero, Topview Court. As a mother of two CSD students and a former Cedarburg School District teacher, and a current teacher in a very high-performing district in Milwaukee County, it is apparent in my district where I am employed that their board prioritizes student needs above all else. As a parent and as a teacher, who is deemed distinguished by the Cedarburg School District, I have observed firsthand that the Cedarburg School Board doesn't always put students first. This is the primary reason why I ran for school board and why I am dedicated to continue to build awareness of these needs. The Cedarburg School Board has a history of making decisions based upon personal beliefs, political pressures, and the need to maintain status quo. As is evidenced by the passion in this room and our community, many are ready for a change. It is time to start putting personal agendas aside and to put the needs of our students first. It's time to start, it's time to repair the parts of the system that are broken. The lack of transparent communication, the refusal to engage in dialogue with all stakeholders, and a stubborn resistance to change demonstrates a lack of respect for your teachers and staff, and ultimately, for students and families they serve. This rigidity has created a negative work environment, as evidenced by the continued resignations of top-notch staff members. You have the opportunity to start to repair the damaged relationships you've had with members of your staff and this community so that Cedarburg can regain the premier status it once had. This means proactively engaging with educators, parents, community members, and most importantly, our students. This means listening to them, believing them when they bring problems to you, and showing each one of them the compassion and concern they deserve. Denying their concerns, questioning their concerns, or showing willful indifference to their concerns will not repair these issues and will not make them go away. Your priority should be to ensure that each and every one of our students has the tools needed to leave this district ready to participate in a global society armed with academics, social, emotional, and communication skills needed to succeed. I am ready, and so are many of my neighbors, to do the work, and I ask you to please, put your political agendas aside, listen to all of your district families, and put students first. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, please step up to the mic, and Hannah Lopez, please get on deck.
My name is Jessica Tippemper, W seven one seven one, N six six one Harrison Avenue. I had some comments prepared, but much has been said and much that I agree with. One thing I do want to say is thank you to the entire Cedarburg School District community for everything that you do for our students. My comments are in regard to the mask policy as well as equity and the climate that I'm feeling tonight. I felt a lot of stress this evening from other people and within myself as I listened to the emotions that people are clearly feeling. So I'll start with the mask policy. I know a lot pertains to that. One thing I wanted to add to what has already been said, which is quite a bit, is an article that I read from the Journal of the American Medical Association from February, talking about the effectiveness of mask-wearing. It was a meta-analysis of 11 peer-reviewed studies that looked at the efficacy of mask-wearing against the spread of COVID. Their recommendation was that with the emergence of more transmissible variants, it's even more important to adopt widespread mask-wearing as well as to redouble our efforts with use of all other non-pharmaceutical prevention measures until effective levels of vaccination are achieved nationally. We're right around 30% right now, so we're not there. We have never, ever, ever flattened the curve, and we know that that B.1.1.7 variant, the UK variant, is the dominant variant in the U.S. In Michigan in particular, the Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy out of the University of Minnesota said that the most common setting for outbreaks in the state of Michigan is in the school setting because the variant is spreading through children in a way that we just have not seen before. So I would say, please stay the course. There's only a few weeks left of school. I am an educator. I appreciate, and I'm supposed to talk to you, so I'll say, I appreciate the work of our educators, whether it be our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our school leaders have done so much work this year to make this function. Don't throw all that work away and throw our students and our staff into a state of even more stress and even more confusion than they've already seen this year. Let's get through to the end of the year, revisit this summer, and see where we are for the fall. I want my kids to be back in person in the fall. With that being said, please support social, emotional learning and the psychological needs of our students and staff. Our climate is clearly in crisis. We need to do more to address the issues of equity regardless of where we stand on that topic. It needs to be addressed so that everyone feels safe in this school. I'm disappointed to hear that on social media, we're promoting hate from our student body. Let's not make that a news topic for Cedarburg schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Hannah, please step up to the mic, and Scott Gass, please get on deck.
My name is Hannah Lopez, N ninety-three, West seventy-two thirty-one Churchill Street. I have a son at Cedarburg High School, a son at Webster Middle School, and a son at Parkfield, all virtual this year, which means I am very much looking forward to in-person in the fall. I appreciate everything that has been done up until now and just want to voice my support for continued efforts to mitigate the risk and ensure safety for the students and staff. We're not out of the woods yet, and there's no harm in continuing with conservative measures to mitigate risk for the community and for everyone in the school district. I am also wanting to support or show my support for the students that spoke and the parents that spoke about the difficulties that our BIPOC students are facing and, you know, want to be an ally and support any efforts to be proactive with regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion in the district, to make this district the place it can be for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, please approach the mic. Jennifer Collins, please get on deck. Scott, are you here? Scott Gass? All right, then we'll move on to Jennifer Collins, and Sam Cox, please get on deck.
While they're walking up, could I make a motion that we extended another 30 minutes because we are past the initial hour with the same as before?
And is that the same as before to finish the?
Finish the list and then on the agenda items after.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? Huddles in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries. All right. All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer Collins, W 59, N 783, Hywood Drive. Superintendent members of the board, since last July, the district has repeatedly stated it would follow the advice of public health officials, the CDC, and the Health Department when making decisions regarding mitigation measures in schools such as masks and social distancing. Tonight, I urge you to continue to follow the Health Department's advice and keep the mandatory mask policy in place throughout the end of the school year. There are experts in their field, and we should follow their guidance as it is set forth. We should look to science, public health officials, and facts, not opinions, partisan politics, or special interest groups. It's the responsibility of school board members to ensure the health and safety of students and staff. Board members should always act in the best interests of staff and students. Educators are persevering through what many have stated is their most challenging year yet. With only 30 days left in the school year, we should keep our current policies in place and stay consistent for the sake of students and staff. Teachers have worked tirelessly to teach routines, policies, and procedures. Changes to this policy now will only further burden our educators. Every day, educators and school staff do the heavy lifting for this district. Let's do something for them in return. Ask for their input and follow their advice on this policy and future policies. I thank and appreciate all of the educators and school staff who have worked hard to make this year a success for our students. This district has some of the best teachers. If we want to keep the best teachers, we need to start treating them like they are the best. Few teachers leave an environment where they feel valued, supported, appreciated, and treated like a professional. Last, for the 21-22 school year, we should wait to make changes to the policy and should make a decision when it is closer to the start of this new school year. We should follow the advice of the Health Department and public health officials at the time when making a decision for next year. We will not know that advice until the time is closer. Therefore, a decision to change the policy now would be premature. In regards to the mask policy for next year, I urge you to wait, evaluate, and make a decision when it is closer to the start of the 21-22 school year. Community members, educators, school staff, and students are paying attention to both your words and actions. Where you align yourself matters. People gravitate to people in places where their beliefs, ethics, morals, and principles align. Where do we want to stand? On the side of science, students, staff, and families? On the side of empathy, compassion, and the greater good? Or with special interests, partisan politics, and those still citing debunked claims? Masks are not political. Taking the advice of the Health Department and public officials is not political. Our children are not data points. Our students and staff's health, safety, and best interests should always come first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sam, please approach the mic. Anna Kolbach, please get on deck.
Hi, I'm Sam Cox, 1560 Galaxy Court. As you all know, your ethical duties and responsibilities as board members are laid out in board policy. You render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. You inform yourselves about current educational issues, and remember always that your first and greatest concern must be for the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. This is not up for discussion. These are our policies. In a perfect world, the community would trust its board to abide by these policies and make its decisions with no issues. But the world is not always perfect, and neither are some of the prevailing opinions and behaviors of individual board members. Many are here tonight to talk about mask language. Based on evidence, facts, and prevailing scientific knowledge, this debate really shouldn't be a debate at all. But again, certain opinions make for interesting interpretations on what counts as science and data, especially when one feels that campaign promises must be kept. The mask issue will continue to evolve, but make no mistake that you must do your due diligence on the other important issues that are imminent as well. Soon, you'll be auditing your human growth and development curriculum and making the important decision as to whether or not to continue the philosophy of curricular materials that seek to take a moral high ground, alienating and demeaning all students and families who do not fit its mold. Or choose to implement a curriculum that helps students to better understand the realities of becoming an adult, their relationships, choices, health, identities, and consent, among other things. You continue to have on your hands issues regarding equity, equality, and nondiscrimination. Many students and families say they have never experienced anything negative. That is a privilege that too many students and graduates have not had, having experienced discrimination against them because of their ethnicity, race, culture, or other component of their identity, including the brave students who have spoken here tonight. It's one thing to say that we follow policy and run everything through the right channels, but what needs work, and it is now your work as a school board, is to change the culture of our district so that we have made overtly clear that this type of behavior is not a part of the social contract that we expect our students and community to abide by. Discrimination is not some sort of problem that you solve with policy alone. This board and all future boards need to show the public how much of a priority it is to address our culture in this regard. It's easy to say now that we can return to normal without considering that the world we live in is not yet back to normal. It's easy to say, "I won, so it's my way now," without acknowledging that voters' motivations are not necessarily what board policy dictates your motivations in decision-making to be. It's easy to say that people with whom we don't agree subscribe to some sort of backwards political ideology without recognizing how those people see our beliefs, as subscribing to a different backwards political ideology. I may only be a Milwaukee County teacher, but I'm also a former board member who understands the complexity of the positions you find yourselves in. You need to do your job to make your decisions with the well-being of all our students, families, and district in mind. Don't let us down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna, please approach the mic. And Lisa Berger, please get on deck.
Okay. There you go. Should I go or should I wait?
You can start.
Okay. All right. My name is Anna Kolbach. I live at 8501 Bridge Street in the town of Cedarburg. Good evening. I have been watching these board meetings for nearly a year, and there is one subject not addressed as a discussion item yet by the curriculum board that has been repeatedly requested by parents: inequity and racism in schools and the curriculum. Look, I get not wanting to broach this subject. It's difficult. It's embarrassing. It's multifaceted. It feels like we're being personally judged when we're asked to look critically at ourselves. I mean, we're good people. And good people don't say or do or support racist things. We are good people, but that doesn't mean that we're perfect people. As parents, it's our job to model acceptable behavior for our children, including admitting when we can do better. Because our children are watching, our children are listening, even when we don't think that they are. My God in heaven, my third grader, I won't even go into it. We are blessed to be part of a community that demands excellence from its teachers and from each other and from the board. Community members have even created criteria that frankly is commonly seen in most workplaces already, that helps us grow and holds us accountable, such as adopting a nondiscrimination policy on the basis of race, enforcing existing policies holding CSD employees and students accountable when racism is reported, and expanding implicit bias training to all CSD staff that will be reviewed yearly, as well as hiring a consultant and a full-time equity director that can review gaps in current policies related to racial equity and nondiscrimination, evaluate hiring and retention of district staff of color, and review curriculum through a lens of equity. Our history books are monolithic. When children are taught only one part of the equation, they're not equipped to create solutions for our future, and they are the future. By teaching our children about the 12 Tribes of Wisconsin, Juneteenth, Black Wall Street, effigy mounds, and notable figures such as Catherine Johnson, Maria Tall, Chief John Harrington, and Thurgood Marshall, we expand our children's understanding of who is America and who makes America great. Let's seize this opportunity to learn and grow together in utiny for our children's future. And with 30 seconds left, I'd like to reiterate the emails that I've sent to the majority of the school board regarding masking policy moving into summer and fall. I've already given my opinion as a local business owner on this. We're almost there. We're so close, but we're not quite there yet. Can we please just hang on for a few more months so hopefully we can go back into fall? And frankly, as a business owner, my tourist season is not ruined again. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, please approach the microphone.
My name is Lisa Berger, N 74, W 7780, Rolling Meadow Court in Cedarburg. I know you guys tabled the discussion for the 0114.5 board member policy, but I wanted to discuss that. So as you guys are planning ahead, you guys can know my thoughts. The policy states the board functions most effectively when individual board members act ethically, professionally, and responsibly. School board members serve as a member of the school district's governing body and do not have individual authority to represent a policy or enforce positions that are not supported by the majority of the board, as evidenced by official action of the board. Makes a lot of sense. What happens if a board member was to violate its bylaws? How do they be held accountable for not complying with their bylaws? Under the enforcement section, we find out that complaints alleging board member misconduct may be brought by any person and can be submitted to the board president or the board president or if it's the board president, it can be, let me repeat that, it can be submitted to the board president or if the board president is the member accused of violating this policy to the vice president. There is a review process, and in the end, the board may consider a number of possible actions against the person having committed the misconduct. This is the one way that board members are held accountable for their behaviors and actions. It prevents members from acting with impunity and neglecting to be, to put the well-being of the district anywhere but first while making decisions. It helps to ensure their positive leadership of the school district. This language was taken from the existing policies. Why then would members of the school board seek to take away language that would hold the board accountable? Why strike the considerations that are in violation of a board member behavior? The board may place a restriction on board member rights granted by policy, including requesting items for a board meeting agenda, consider a referral to proceed with efforts to remove the board member for cause, which means efficiency, neglect of duty, official misconduct in office, or consider off, or consider other efforts to pursue compliance with and adherence to the policy as determined by the board and not by law. What reason is there unless there is a board member or members that fear they have violated or may violate in the future these behaviors? It is not far-fetched giving the behaviors of some of the board members of late. For example, Mr. Corrier, the presiding officer at the last meeting, failed to enforce school board policy regarding mandatory mask wearing on school campus. Did this violation occur because he is serving his own bias against mask wearing and his public claim that he lies, aligns with the state senator who's anti-mask wearing instead of acting as an ambassador of the well-being of the district as he should? These changes were not recommended to our board because of some national initiative. They were recommended by the board members here tonight that wish to be held less accountable than they were previously. This undermines the integrity of the board in our school district. This is something that should not be taken lightly.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on an item that is listed on the agenda? Please step down. And just a reminder that not necessarily everything that has been spoken about in the public comment section is on the agenda, so please limit your comments to the items on the agenda per the motion.
Sorry, I wasn't, oh, my name is Ed Ketersky. I live at 7932 Pioneer Road. I'm sorry, I wasn't really planning on talking today. Could one of the medical people remind me, what's the name of the really good masks?
N95.
N95? That's what I figured you would say. I've asked several doctors, physical therapists, chiropractors, what are the good masks? And everybody says N95. It's not true. This is a whole topic that makes me so suspicious about the science and the information that we're getting from the experts. If you go ask a tradesman, somebody who scrapes paint for a living, cleans out asbestos for a living, maybe is an HVAC worker, maybe from a small town or a big city, they'll tell you that the N100s are the good masks. An N95 filters 95% of particles, and N100 filters 99.97%. And they actually protect the wearer, not the other people. And so anybody who's fearful or is concerned, maybe they have a health condition, they should be looking to get a mask like that to wear. And the people who are not so concerned for their own health can maybe go without. So there are options to keep everybody happy, but we're not being told about those options. Another thing is if you have a, if you have a student who does have a serious health condition, you could put an air scrubber in their room, in the classroom where they sit. That would be better than these cloth masks that don't do anything except harbor bacteria. So I would say actually do your own research. Don't just go listen to the CDC or whatever politician has given their two cents worth, but actually go look up N100 masks and air filtration, and you can find articles dating back for years on this topic. The masks and the filters that actually do protect you from viruses were invented in the 1940s as part of the Manhattan Project to filter out radiation that's flying around with particles in the air. So that's my two cents worth. I would support letting families have the choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to?
Hi. My name is Shelley. I live in Ozarks County. I pulled my son out of school.
Could you please state your full name and address for the record? I'm sorry.
Shelley Skork, 697 J Road, Cedar Grove, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
My name is Shelley Skork. Did you get that? Okay. I want to urge you to get rid of the masks, and I'll tell you why. I pulled my son out of high school last year in the fall because I was not going to have him wear a mask for seven hours a day. Okay? The masks, those blue masks that you're wearing, do not stop the virus. I'm a registered nurse. I've been a nurse for 30 years. I was in the Milwaukee ER for 22 years during H1N1, swine flu, bird flu, cockadoodle flu, all of that. You'd never, ever put a mask on a healthy person. That asymptomatic, that whole theory has been debunked. That's not true. If I don't have symptoms, how am I passing it to you? Right? And the other mask, you might want to look up the study that was just published from Stanford University that was very quietly submitted to the National Institute of Health that says that masks are less than 1% effective and they can actually cause harm. Stanford University, NIH. So those blue masks were designed per OSHA to be less than 3% effective at stopping particulates, and that was if it was changed every hour. Most people that I see, it's my concern, I see people wearing the same mask day after day after day. They fold it up, they put it in their purse, they put it in their pocket, kids are chewing on it, it's full of makeup. Do you think that that mask has been compromised, the integrity of that mask? Absolutely. It's no longer effective. So most of the people in this room right now wearing a mask, you're just like me. You're no different. Okay? It's a false sense of security. So I just ask you to give the, give it, get back to the parents, let the parents make the decision. Okay? Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi. Thank you for letting us speak and for this whole time. My name is Denise Seifer. I live at 223 East Altaloma Circle, Viensville. I'm here for a couple reasons. Many of you know me. I was a reporter. I am also, have been teaching in your schools for the past five years. I left this year. I left because of masks. What you also don't know is I also have pulmonary arterial hypertension. You would think I'd be scared of this, but I'm not. I've done all my research. I've talked to all my physicians. I know masks are not going to keep me safe. What keeps me safe are doing the things we would normally do under a flu season. Staying Staying healthy, getting fresh air, taking your vitamins, eating right, being smart like you would at any other time. Wash your hands. Wash your hands. Wash your hands. And clean. Okay? Masks should be optional. What's the endgame? We were told kids needed to wear masks to protect their parents and grandparents. We now have three vaccines. We were told all these mitigation measures were to ease hospitalization numbers. Cases in Ozaki are virtually nonexistent. There is no reason for schools to have forced masking. Based on relevant and up-to-date science, we know that COVID is not highly contagious, as we once were told. It is highly recoverable, and it is mildly symptomatic for many. Political policy, greed, fear, and ignorance are the only things that we really need to deal with at this time. We are taking the advice of politicians, guys to scientists, with no clinical experience ever in their careers. We allow people without relevant experience or expertise to determine our policies and procedures. That's why you guys were elected. Please consider this. Any educator or parent can clearly look at the CDC's recommendations. Remember, recommendations, not requirements. And no, they are more than impractical, they are impossible. Clinicians of all types, and accurate independent science has proven mask-wearing is neither safe nor effective. For COVID-19, it causes tons of chemical issues within your body. That's why I had to leave. My oxygen goes down. I almost passed out on your second floor. I'm going to say that again. I almost passed out on your second floor walking up the stairs. I had to pull my mask off to catch my breath. My CO2 levels dropped, or I should say, rose. They only dropped when I took the mask off and got my blood retaken. So I don't know what science people are talking about, but I have my medical records. So if it happens to me, I know it's happening to your kids. Maybe not to degree, but it's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Thank you. If you are a student at Cedarburg, please just state your first name only. Do not state your last name or your address, please.
Okay, yes, hello, my name is Gemma. Hello, board. Thank you so much for listening to me today. I just came here from my lacrosse game. I'm back to, in, for my support for the masks, and I want to make sure that I am heard about how I am in support for the masks again. I want to thank the teachers and all of you guys for a great senior year. I've had a wonderful time. I have, it's a weird year, but I've had a good time, and I'm so happy to be in school still. I have 30 days of school left, and I really want to graduate in person, like I am planned to right now. I think the only way to cover this is with continuation of the mask-wearing. I'm having a prom because of masks. I'm able to participate in my lacrosse game because of masks. And I've been able to participate in all of my clubs because of the mask-wearing. I want to thank you for your time, and that is all.
Thank you.
Did we win? Did we win?
Gemma.
Did we win?
Is there anyone else? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on anything on the agenda? Anyone at all? All right. Then at this time, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. We will continue where we left off on Agenda Item 5B, Update on Current COVID Mitigation Measures and Forecasts. Mr. Bignacki.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for attending. It's great to see all of you here and the interest in our students and our school and contributing to our great success. I can remember commenting at a board meeting back in the fall, celebrating the fact that we were in person. We just ended our first quarter. Fast forward, and here we are in the fourth quarter with 30 days of school left. A huge shout-out to our staff, teachers, and our administrators for their incredible effort to manage and lead through these unusual times. We are grateful for their commitment to our kids and the many sacrifices that made to keep our schools open. I also want to give a shout-out and thanks, thank our district office staff, our IT department, and maintenance and custodian crew for pivoting on a dime to get this area ready for the meeting today. This is no easy task to set this up. Everyone had to take time out of their regular duties to make this happen. And tonight, when our custodian staff, when we're done, our custodian staff is going to step in here, set up 270 desks that are behind the screen for Aspire testing here in this, in this, in this space. They're going to be working well past, probably midnight into the early morning hours, getting this ready for our kids. So a shout-out to all of them for their tremendous effort in preparing our facility for tomorrow. So I'm going to start tonight just with an image, and, and the image is always, it's always good to celebrate student success here in Cedarburg. And this image is of our student art. And student art matters. It's original artwork. It's on display at the Cedarburg Art Museum through May 23rd. And I always like starting with something that speaks to your kids, their activities, their events, their successes, because it reminds us of purpose, why we're all here. Throughout this entire pandemic, we have been steadfast on focusing on access, which is to provide families with pri- primary and virtual access to instruction for their children. Quality, that all students will have access to a CSD-adopted curriculum. And safety, in-person instruction will be provided with the safest environment possible. And those have been our guiding principles for this entire pandemic, and they continue to be our guiding principles as we move forward. Through the year, we have been monitoring these metrics and making informed decisions based on our data and other sources. So we continue to look at our data here in our state, our county, Cedarburg, and I also pay attention to data across the country and certainly in our neighboring states. I get off, I get asked often, what are our data sources and research, and what other research do you consult? I can tell you that I reference the CDC, the Washington Ozaki Public Health Department, Children's Hospital, our district medical advisor, superintendent network along the North Shore here in Washington Ozaki County, the School District Administrators Association, and Wisconsin Association of School Boards, just to name a few. Those are the resources I draw upon amongst others. But I think the most important resource and data source that I have is experiencing working with 3,100 kids and 420 staff members this year. So that's 3,100 kids and 420 staff members we have experienced working with. And we've been in-person since September with a brief pause around the Thanksgiving break. The data allows us to make informed decisions regarding our mitigation measures and instructional models. Tonight, we will share information that speaks to our in-person success in areas we are attentive to when making decisions. My administrative team that's, oh, they're sleeping over there. Administrative team, you awake? No, they're there. Our administrative team is going to help with the presentation, and they're going to be speaking at that podium throughout this presentation. So all of you are probably familiar with the Washington Ozaki Public Health Department website and their, their data tracker. And Brenda, I think you're going to jump to that site if you don't mind, just so we can show an image of what the current data is in our zip code. So this is just tracking on data that shows the positive cases of the virus through several months. And it actually goes back to, I want to say, July, yeah, May, actually, and it takes us all the way up to today's date. So when we put the mask mandate back in place in July, where there was 181 positive cases to 100,000. And right now, as of today, actually, as of April 23rd, we have 143 cases, 400,000. Now, this isn't just student cases. This is cases in our zip code, so that's 53012.
And taught by cases, you mean positive test results?
Positive test results. Thank you, Dave, for that clarification. That's correct.
They're not people in a hospital, in other words.
Correct. Yeah. So what we know is that there is a variant of this virus that is now at play. You heard that this evening. You can certainly see that in the national news, state news, local news. And some reports indicate that the variant is affecting younger, the younger population, which is a bit different than what we experienced in the fall. What I know from my experience from this past fall is that when we see cases increase in our neighboring states, Michigan and Wisconsin, Michigan and Minnesota, and when those numbers start to spike, it's generally about two to four weeks before those numbers hit Wisconsin. That was the pattern in the fall. And we anticipated that, and it got worse, and you know we had to shut down it for a period of time. I'm not making any predictions. It's just an awareness from my experience in working with this. Brenda, can go to the next, back to the slideshow, please. So what I'll show, share with you here is just our district data. This is a look back over the last 30 days. You can go online and see this. What it shows is that we've had very few cases in the last 30 days. In fact, for the, for the past 14 days, student positive cases, we've had zero. In the last 30 days, for students, we've had a total of five. For staff, the past 30 days, we've had one positive case. Those are great numbers. Those are super-good numbers. Those are numbers worthy of celebration. And I'm excited about those numbers because I think what we're doing works. The total number of cases, positive cases here in the system between students and staff are 230 since the beginning of the year. 230. But that's not the whole story. What we don't talk much about is quarantines. The quarantines are what hurts the system. So when you quarantine, you're sending kids out, you're sending staff out. It taxes the system. It disrupts their education. And so the numbers are just part of it. Positive cases is just part of the story. The quarantines are quite painful to the system, and it just disrupts the students' instruction. On this next slide, it just, again, looks at the data over the course of the last 30 days. I'm not going to dive deep into this. It's all on our website. You get a sense of what we're looking at. Our most recent data, I think on April 23rd, we had four kids that were quarantined. And they were quarantined because of exposure outside the school system. You've heard a lot of statements this evening, some from medical experts, some from parents with their firsthand knowledge. We know that schools do not, the transmission in schools is very low. We know that. And I, I think in parts because of mitigation measures, parts just the way the virus works. Our experiences have proven that we know how to work within this environment. And I think the success shows by mere fact that we are still in person, and we are being quite successful in, in our, in our work. So this particular slide, again, you can, you'll have access to this after the show, after the presentation. But it's a 90-day look back. So those little orange, those little orange bars are actually positive cases. The top is, this is students and the bottom is staff. And so when you look back over the last 90 days in staff, we've had two positive cases. You can see in the students, it's been a bit, a bit more than that. But we, we've managed that. We've been, we've been successful in managing that. And a shout-out to our staff, our teachers, our nurses' roommates, Nicole Coughlin, our district nurse, kind of at Farner for managing the teachers' absences. We've done a tremendous job. And all that work has really brought students back into our system. Back into our system. And you've heard that from a couple of parents this evening, and I want to make certain we all know that. Our work has brought students back into our system. We know we're not out of the woods. You've heard that phrase a number of times tonight. Talking with the Health Department recently, a local school district had a quarantine entire fifth grade within the last four weeks. Within the last four weeks, there were 30 positive cases between students and staff in Washington County, and it was the variant that they had detected. So we're not in the clear. We get that. But we're going to continue to forge ahead. We have 30 days of school left, and we're pretty excited about what that forecast looks like. Tonight, each department will share their efforts to maintain the current in-person instructional model. We'll start with the Buildings and Grounds presentation. They have a slide, and that's Director John Costa.
Good evening. Thanks for hanging in there. I know it's been a long night. This slide represents much equipment that we use and tools that we use to keep the sanitation properly allocated and to keep basically kids in school. So much of what you see here are items that we use to sanitize and to keep things on top as far as state-of-the-art cleaning. Most notably is number two, which would be our HVAC system. The district and the board made a huge commitment in expenditures as well as, as a proactive approach to make sure that we keep our HVAC and our indoor air quality at top-notch. We have a single-pass system which allows us to sanitize and scrub the air as kids are in the facilities. We purge this, we purge this system in the, in the mornings as well as in the evenings, and run our system. As you can tell today, we've been running it nonstop. And then secondly, number eight, is our COVID cleaning team. It was an intended allocation by the board to bring extra people in here to sanitize and to do things that were above and beyond what other districts, and quite frankly, other, other factories, other operations are doing as far as taking care of sanitizing, scrubbing, and cleaning the facility. In addition to that, we also have to kind of migrate and do things like help out with cafeteria duties. Pivot, make sure that we can clean the facilities and move kids around when they're not eating in cafeteria so we can have proper social distancing. That requires bodies, and that requires people to assist. So those are the items that we've been doing. Those are things, some of the things that we've been taking care of. It's a huge commitment by the district, a huge commitment by our staff. And this is all above and beyond just their general square footage coverage that we've been taking care of, so.
John, I have a question.
Yeah.
The HVAC, the UV lights and that. I know you've said at Building and Grounds that we probably have some of the cleanest air anywhere in any school district. How often is it exchanging air within our buildings?
Rick, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
How often are we exchanging air within our buildings with this new system that cleans on single passes? You've talked about it as-
Oh, yeah. So we're, we're above the ASHRAE standards as far as what's required of us, as far as turnover ratio. But more importantly, what it is, it's a single-pass kill rate. So as the air passes through those lights, it sanitizes and purifies. It's single-pass kill. It, it's not the UV lights of the old that we had. We've added the UV light banks, and we also added MERV 13 filtration to assist with that. So we are bringing air that is purified out, hospital-grade air, operating-room-grade air that's coming out into our classrooms. This is unique to schools. This isn't something that school districts are doing. When they talk about the ESSAR grants that are going out there, and they're talking about improving HVAC, we've already done it. This has been running all year for us. So we've been taking care of this all year. So we're pushing that air into and operating that air in classrooms. Every single classroom, every single room, every gym, every facility that we have has got that. It was a huge commitment and a huge allocation by the board. So in alignment with ASHRAE standards is what we do. Whether it's a gym, all spaces have different rates with which we turn over air. So it, it varies by classroom. It varies by, depending upon the temperatures, it varies by how much air. You know, we've got a state-of-the-art HVAC system in this district. It's not an old system. It's a brand-new system throughout the district. So we're super proud of that. Our indoor air quality is above reputed. It's the best that's out there.
Thank you.
So, yep. Thank you.
John, it's fair to say that many of these mitigation measures are going to continue next year.
Yep.
Right? Because they're part of our system.
Yeah. What we're hoping to do is we're hoping to continue to keep some COVID cleaners onboard. The, the sanitation system that we operate, it's normal protocol. It's our practice that we currently have now. That's not going to change. We'll never go backwards with this. We will not change how we operate and how we do things. The COVID cleaning team, we're hoping that we can keep a fraction of it, 50% of it, to keep allocating that and moving to next year. We don't know what next year brings us, but we don't want to get caught. We want to keep and be proactive and stay out ahead of that curve.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit at the PNF, where we're-
Correct.
Putting that into the budget. Putting that into the budget for next year.
That's correct. So, and that's in the budget for next year. It's at a lesser level, but I certainly feel that we can accomplish that and accommodate it. Yep. We did have a reduced rate. You know, it was a very difficult challenge to hire those COVID cleaners. It was, you know, you're pulling all these people together. We had some, like 30 people that we were going to bring into the district, of which we were able to hire about 60, 65% of those, so.
That's great.
Thanks, John.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Director of Cricket Instruction, Alan Growth.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to draw your attention to the slide up on the screen, which is a data slide. When you look at a data slide, you can often interpret it in lots of different kinds of ways. I just want to briefly give you a little bit of an overview of it. So this is about enrollment. Semester one, across the top, you'll see elementary, middle school, and high school. And then down the left side, students are broken into two groups, in-person and virtual. And then you've got semester one in the blue, and then yellow is semester two or quarter four. So when you look at the yellow columns, you'll notice an uptick in in-person, which was spoken about already this evening. Todd spoke to this as well, that we have more families with their students in-person and fewer students at home virtually. It also tells a story about access. It shows you that as a district, we can celebrate that we have students accessing the Cedarburg School District curriculum, whatever location they're in, whether they're in-person or at home. So we celebrate more students in-person, but we also celebrate that we were able to provide access for all students. And it's a testament to the dedication of teachers, support staff, the dedication of families at home, supporting their students virtually. It's definitely dedication to administrators who maintained a safe and nurturing culture for continued teaching and learning to take place. So it's a celebration slide. So second slide I'm going to show you, shows you a bit of the insights on teaching and learning, and just some of the structures that were set into place. Across the top are safety protocols, which have been maintained diligently at the schools and certainly supported at the district level. So at all levels, you can see them listed there. Staffing, I want to draw your attention. Staffing at the elementary level is unique in that the principals worked together already in August, looking at what parents were requesting in-person versus virtual. And they consolidated their efforts and worked together as a team to support all things teaching and learning at their schools. So that means practically that there are teachers, and you heard that reference this evening, who teach students virtually, and they may be attending different homeschools. This is part of an efficiency to practically provide high-level instruction to our youngest learners, which is, which has a level of sophistication due to the age of the students. So the amount of dependence on and support of instruction is really higher at the elementary level. And as students age, of course, they grow more independent. So when we pivoted to second semester, I'm in the bottom row, there was, again, parents making a request for more students to be in-person. And as a result, we had to do some reorganization of teachers and students in some of those blended classrooms. So again, it was, parents were, we foreshadowed that for parents so they knew. And we appreciate everyone working with us as we made those adjustments. Again, just ensuring an efficient, maximizing staff and providing students a really wonderful experience, both whether in-person or at home. So we, as we approach, it's hard to believe, we're at the end of the school year, 30 days left. And it's certainly been all hands on deck, a dedicated group of professionals in the school system, learning to pivot and provide virtual instruction and in-person instruction throughout the school year. And we just can't collectively say how grateful we are for the community effort of everyone onboard with supporting student learning, whatever location your child was in.
So Alan, is it fair to say that the environments right now, the learning environments, are fairly stable?
They're stable.
Stable. The elementary, you've made that pivot at mid-year to lessen the number of blended classrooms, to have more teachers dedicated to in-person. So it's set up now anticipating more people coming into the system versus exiting the system and going to virtual, at least at the elementary level.
If I understood what you said, Todd, it's a little hard to hear you.
I'm sorry. So I just want to, the environment is stable right now, the instructional model, especially at the elementary, because we had planned the current model to accommodate more people coming into, more students coming into the system than going to the virtual world. And therefore, have limited many of those blended classrooms.
You're correct. So those changes occurred at semester. So there's a lot of effort that went on behind the scenes once parents made their requests to make some of those shifts. Again, maximizing and ensuring the same level of high-quality instruction for everyone. But that is stabilized, and now we are obviously heading into May. And there, it would be a pretty significant change to actually have to reorganize students back. When you have your youngest learners, we, it was not something that we did without a lot of conversation. We don't like to move young learners around to different teachers. So we stabilized that. Everything, everyone is assigned to a teacher. All things are moving along smoothly. So any kind of changes at this time of year would be actually a hardship.
Okay. Thanks, Alan.
Uh-huh.
Next, we have Ted Knoll, Director of People's Services. Ted?
So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit just about some of the implications, depending on the changes of where they go and what's proposed and what's voted on. But we all know that state law requires that school districts keep students safe. That's a pretty common sense, fundamental principle we operate under. And that students with medical conditions are owed a duty of care, including not being exposed to unsafe conditions in school. And we've been really fortunate this year because of our mitigation and our approach that we've been able to accommodate most students within our system with a lot of work. Our teachers have really stepped up to do some great, awesome things. But we've avoided any major incident with students with medical conditions, particularly those under Section 504 in the IDA, which is special education. So all the things we're doing are keeping our children safe and meeting our obligations under the federal and state law. So any potential exposure to health hazards may result in more students being identified by medical providers as requiring that the district provide homebound instruction. We've had some requests. We've worked through them. We've had a lot of great conversations with parents and our teachers. But we've been able to avoid a lot of these situations by being able to get students into our buildings because we have such great mitigation and such prevention measures in place. So these would have been a great strain on the district, both financially and logistically, is hiring potentially more teachers and scheduling more meetings, things like that. But we've been able to work through these because of the preparation we put into this year, as well as how we were able to work with parents and teachers to help them move through the system. Students identified under the IDA in Section 504 with medical conditions, and one of the things I do, that's primarily is, the biggest part of my job is working with students with any type of medical disability types of things, may require a variety of different types of instruction and accommodation if they are not able to enter the school safely. Generally, the doctor would sign off on that, and they'd get different medical provider information to us, and we work with our health nurse, Nicole Koffte. But all those things fall under how we approach, what we would do depending on the mitigation we would change within our school system. Any questions for me?
Nope.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Next, we have Director of Technology and Assessment, Kristen Collins.
Good evening. As you well know, last March, our assessments, state and district, were abruptly suspended. And we have felt the impact of that, especially this fall with the lack of student data, student assessment data that we regularly rely on. And this year, so we have had a significant amount of work that has gone into ensuring the safety of our students and our staff when we administer our state and district assessments. So this work includes planning for students in both learning environments, for their safety, and also for the most valid and reliable assessment data that we can have. So our examples of some of the work that we've done includes providing online platforms and new procedures for assessing our students who are virtual. That is being done with our assessments, such as our MAP assessments, our BAS assessment. AP has an online, which we, an online portal that we used last year also. So that is not new to us this year. But with state assessments, there's a requirement that they are actually administered on-site. There is no virtual option. And so a lot of our work has gone into planning for safe access to the buildings for our virtual students, who many have not stepped foot in our buildings this year. So for the forward exam, the ACT, ASPIRE, which you heard Todd say, will be tomorrow in this room. I believe it's our 10th graders who are in-person in here. We have our virtual students in both, I believe, the cafeteria with that separate entrance. And then I'm drawing a blank on the other space. But anyway, our maintenance staff will know exactly where those are because they'll be setting up real soon. But, so we're providing separate entrances, alternate schedules, access to lunch to the buildings in different ways. So a lot of planning and a lot of work to make sure that we're able to gather this data that really helps us with providing our instructional differentiated instruction and interventions. It also provides accountability measures for us in the end. So currently, the windows that we still have this year, our assessment windows, would be the state assessments. And so those will finish up by May 14th. Much of our student testing will be completed by then. Some of our accommodated testing and makeup testings may push out until those later days in May. And then our district's spring MAP assessment window is May 17th to the 28th. The implications of especially these windows is it really helps us, and we look to especially the MAP data, to identify the COVID gap. So we've had a lot of talk about what that COVID gap and this impact of these last year and a half will be on our students and their learning. And we really need to identify the learning needs of our students. And we'll look at this data very, very closely. It'll help us plan for fall. So we're really hoping we can get the majority of our students through these assessments very swiftly and with the least disruption as we continue in May. Do you have any questions, anything about our assessments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you. So board members, we've heard from Cricket Instruction, People's Services, and Assessment. Now we'll hear from Conrad Farner on HR. And the purpose in these presentations and these discussions and information is just to show you that we are in a very stable environment. We've created an environment where we are accepting kids back into the system, and our instructional model is built to manage that. So it's a very stable environment. And as the board wrestles with the decision this evening, to disrupt that stabilization would cause a significant disruption in the system and ultimately impact student learning and what you've heard so far. And Conrad's going to talk a little bit about stabilizing staff and where we are with that.
All the efforts that you've heard about this evening are the reason that we've been able to stabilize our staffing. And I have to say, the average person cannot possibly appreciate the Herculean efforts that have gone into keeping our schools open every day because it has been nothing short of Herculean. There are not enough substitutes out there. We've had to hire people to just make sure we have adequate coverage. We're using people every day in positions that they're not normally asked to be in. Our Buildings and Grounds crew has done a fantastic job keeping the environment safe. Our teachers and our principals have done an amazing job, being flexible, getting to work every day, covering for each other, juggling the classes. The work that's been done just to even change our delivery models so that we can have enough teachers and staff to support the students. It has been a constant daily struggle, but we've made it work. And a major reason why our district avoided a lot of issues that other districts had to deal with was because of all the mitigation efforts. If we change our mitigation efforts, I can tell you right now, we will have a number of staff who are going to have medical issues and will not be able to report to work. We'll also have to change the delivery model because of the number of students that are going to stay home. That will take a whole lot of time. That will take a lot of effort to figure out what that's going to look like. And basically puts us right back where we were in July and August when we were getting ready for the start of the year and figuring out, how are we going to balance staff availability, FMLA, ADA issues with what the parents are asking as far as how they want their students? Do they want it virtually? Do they want to be in-person? So if we change it, which is certainly the prerogative of the board, they just need to understand there's going to be a time gap. We can't just turn around on a dime. We will need to find out what our students and staff are going to be able to do if we change from the current mitigation efforts. So I just, I don't want people to be surprised. It will take at least two weeks, probably just to survey and get a feel for where people are at. And then we're going to have to go through all the medical, doctor's excuses, the FMLA paperwork. We have to go through what's called an interactive process for anybody who has a disability. And regardless of what anybody thinks personally, I can tell you a significant number of our staff and their doctors do believe strongly in the mitigation efforts that we have in place because that's what's allowed many of our staff members to come every day. And if we pull that away, we're going to lose staff. And I don't know how much people know about this. This, we're entering the worst time of the year to find substitutes. April, May is a nightmare because a lot of people are able to sub during the rest of the year. They find other jobs. They're doing other things. The weather gets better. They have summer jobs. We can't find substitutes in a normal situation, in a good year, once we hit the end of April and May. So it will be a daunting challenge if we do make any changes.
Conrad, you said it would be a challenge for any changes? Or are you talking about major changes?
Any major changes to mitigation.
Yeah, okay.
If a teacher, if we say masks are not required, we will lose a bunch of teachers, and aides, and paras.
Because there's some, I think later in the slides, changes recommended, maybe? And I just wanted to make sure you're not saying that those would fall into this category.
The biggest one I can say is masking. The one I can't predict is, I don't know what any individual, staff member, and their doctor are going to say about any specific change. Just can't predict it.
Right, right, exactly. I just wanted to understand your perspective.
Yep. The primary one that I'm concerned about is going to be the masking and distancing. Those are the two main ones that our staff have said that's the reason they're coming.
So Conrad, did you want to touch on summer schools well?
Segue to summer school, sure. Summer school is basically the same thing. We're staffing it as we speak. We're still, we've got a few positions still left to fill. If we change the mitigation, again, we'll probably lose staff for our summer program. I don't know that we'll be able to run the summer program. We can't find teachers to teach the classes as we speak right now. You know, as great as Summer Academy is, and as wonderful of a time as we have there, and as fantastic as an experience it is for our students, this year of all years, I think we're finding many, many people are saying, I can't teach another four weeks in the summer after everything that's already happened. And again, normal years, it's a challenge, but this year will be especially daunting. And so right now, things have been looking pretty good. Like I said, we're close to filling the last positions that we need to fill. If we change things up, we're going to, I don't know if we'll be able to offer the summer academy. I just don't know. We won't know until, again, we have to survey. We have to find out who's available. We'd have to start reposting for people that aren't available, and we're just running out of time to do that. I mean, it seems like it's a month and a half away, but people don't understand how quickly that time will go.
This slide just talks about the dates. Registration opens on May 3rd. We're anticipating about 1,000 students enrolling. I think it's critical to note that we want students in summer school because that's where we get to close that COVID gap. And so any significant adjustments to those mitigation measures could jeopardize having students come into the system and getting that support that they need in the summer before we begin school in the fall. It also should be noted that we are not offering a virtual program this year in summer school.
No.
It's all in-person. So that's a step and the direction that we are all looking for, which is back to some sense of normalcy. And so we're looking like from September to the September as a continuum. And part of that step in that process to get back to, let's say, a typical year, would be get. would be get to offer summer school in person, and that's what we're planning to do. I think if we make any adjustments, as Conrad said, to the mitigation measures, we'll see those numbers go down. Staffing is going to be an issue and our ability to close the gap for those students who need it would be jeopardized.
It could also go up, though, if people are, you know, interested in, you know, people might not be doing it because of the requirements. You just don't know.
Yeah, I think when you look at the number of students who are in the system, you you don't, you're correct, Dave, but you look at the number of students who are in our system right now. It's an all-time high for kindergarten through eighth grade. We have 90% of our students in person right now. High school is a little less. It's about 81 to 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 19%. So those numbers are the highest numbers we've had all year. And it's because of the work of our principals and teachers and creating that safe environment and recruiting those kids in. And I've spoken with principals and they've worked hard to get kids back into the system. We know it's best for them to be in person. Even with the mask mandate in place, it's best to be with your peers and receive that quality instruction in front of the teacher. So summer school is a key component to the school year. And we consider summer school part of the 2021 school year. So it's not, it's not, it's not a school year in and of itself. It is part of the 2021 school year. So decisions that are made this evening will impact summer school. Because summer school starts right on the heels of 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 school when school's done, right? Conrad, I can't remember the date there.
Yeah, so it'll be the third and fourth week of June. And then 4th of July is off, and then it's the next two weeks in July. I'm sorry, I don't have the dates memorized.
And I would add that I think this year's summer school is the most important summer school we'll probably ever have. So we really want to encourage parents to get their kids in summer school. I think this year it will help close that gap, get them jumpstarted to get back to a regular school year.
I, yeah, I agree, Kevin. And Kristin's slide about the assessments, that data is used to plan for summer school. It's used to plan for instruction. We use that data now and we'll use it during the summer school. And we'll use it to plan in the fall. So we want those students in the system so they can take those assessments, so we can use that data. And we know if there's a significant change and students aren't going to come into the system, then the likelihood of them taking the assessment and us getting the data, it's it's not going to be that highly likely. Thanks. Thanks, Conrad.
Thank you.
The next slide is a slide that speaks to the financial impact. And the director of business services, Ben Earl, will address this.
Yep. So when we look at financial impacts, it mainly focuses on if there's an influx or an increase in the number of virtual learning students that we have in the system. So the first part is just looking at our ESSR grants. The ESSR grants come in three rounds so far. And ESSR 2 has a certain portion allocated towards funding, towards school districts that have more in-person instructional hours. So for the rest of the year, if there was an increase in the number of virtual learning students, we would not be able to claim those hours because those are ineligible as part of that that grant. Those grants are mostly going to be used to take care of most of the costs we have this year in response to the pandemic. As you remember from our budget hearing in last last fall, we're anticipating over $700,000 in additional costs this year to remain in person. And we're anticipating to claim all that with these ESSR grants. And so maximizing those funds is a priority. Next piece is just looking at our open enrollment. Resident school, resident students are able to open a roll out of the district if they choose to do so. This year, we saw an increase of over 40 students as part of that program, with most of those students going to school districts with a dedicated virtual learning school. From a financial side of things, each student that attends outside of the district, we have to pay the non-resident school district $8,000. So the financial impact for this year has been over $300,000 to our budget. Our long-term hope is that those students start to return back to the system. And we're able to avoid having to pay those additional expenses as a result of the open enrollment costs.
Please, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
I do have a question. Sorry. You you said that we had the cost of 300,000. How much is that, though, above and beyond what's normal? Because every year we have kids who don't, who are resident who don't go to our schools.
$300,000 is the additional cost.
It's the additional. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Next, we have Nicole Kafta, who is our district nurse. And she's going to talk about some of the current practices and guidelines that we adhere adhere to here in the district to ensure a safe learning environment.
So this slide goes through what we currently have in place for quarantining, social distancing, contact tracing, face coverings and vaccinations. So the first item there, quarantining. Initially, when we had to quarantine at the start of the year, it was for a full two weeks. Anybody that was found to be a close contact had to quarantine at home for a full 14 days, despite if they underwent COVID-19 testing. Couple months ago, maybe two months ago, the CDC and Department of Health Services did come out with new guidance regarding quarantine. So now there are two options. Any staff member or student that is identified as a close contact can either quarantine for seven days, but it's mandatory that they undergo testing for COVID-19 no sooner than day six and provided that test comes back negative. And they remain symptom-free, they essentially can come back on day eight, back to school, resume all extracurricular activities, and just simply monitor for any development of symptoms. For those families that choose to not opt or choose to not test, their child or staff members choose to not test, then they need to quarantine at home for the full 10 days. Provided they're symptom-free, essentially, they can come back on day 11 and resume all activities. Social distancing, initially, it was CDC recommendations for six feet in all instances. However, recently, the CDC did change that guidance and reduced the distance down to three feet in certain instances. They still recommend six feet of distancing between adults. They still recommend six feet of distancing when you're eating or drinking because you're not wearing, not wearing a mask. In our classrooms, some of our classrooms were able to accommodate that six feet of social distancing. Other classrooms were not. Other classrooms, we might be as low as two feet. And that's simply because of the number of the students that we have in the classroom. That's the maximum amount of distance that we could put between the students. Contact tracing, that's done when when a positive student or staff member has a positive test result for COVID-19. We go through and identify any close contact. So any close contact would be someone that was within six feet of that individual for a total of 15 minutes or more. So even though the distancing has changed in the classroom, the CDC says now that we can do three feet of distancing between students, the actual definition of a close contact has not changed. So when you're doing that contact tracing, you're still contact tracing for the full six feet. So anyone who was within six feet of that positive individual is then identified as a close contact, and then they are required to quarantine. Face coverings, right now, we still are using a universal masking for all stu, all students and all staff members. And with the social distancing that the CDC has come out with, the new updates, one of the things that they clearly state in there in that new update is that that is to apply when universal masking is in place, which is what we currently have at Cedarburg School District. Vaccination, as Mr. Farner discussed earlier, we have about 80% of our staff that have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. And I believe towards the middle of May, approximately 80% will actually be fully vaccinated. So that means at least 14 days have passed since they received their second dose. Right now with the vaccines, the only students that are eligible are those that are age 16 and older. There's still clinical trials going on for the younger children, but right now, the only students that are eligible are those age 16 and up.
Could I ask a couple of quick questions? So the contact tracing, the CDC is still saying six feet of of an area you need to contact trace? Okay, thank you. And then I think I heard today that the CDC came out and said that if you have your two vaccines plus 14 days, that you don't need a mask when you're outdoors. Is that accurate?
Correct. That was just released today. So they're reporting that fully vaccinated individuals do not need to wear a mask outdoors.
Great. Thanks.
I, do you know what? We've had so many people tell us, look at World Health Organization, CDC. World Health, I know from day one has been one meter, which is 3.28 feet. And now we're at three feet for CDC. Do you know, is World Health, has their contract tracing been for three feet or six feet? Because I thought it was three.
With the World Health?
Yes, what everyone else in the world is doing other than what the CDC is telling us. I thought they've always done their tracing based on three feet.
I know CDC DHS is six feet. World Health might be a meter. I'd have to look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question as well.
Sure.
Do we have any numbers on when contact tracing has pointed to transmission within the district?
I just looked at some of our data points actually yesterday. And I went through each school building. And at the high school, we potentially had six students out of 105 cases that reported that may have actually been attributed to student-to-student transmission. So that's approximately 5% of our total positive cases for the high school potentially could be attributed to student-to-student transmission. At the high school level, it's a little harder to determine that because a lot of our students hang out outside of the school building. At Webster, we had a total of 47 cases of COVID-19. And out of the 47 cases, we had two students that potentially could be a student-to-student transmission. The elementary schools, one of the elementary schools had a total of three students out of their 19 cases that were attributed to student-to-student transmission. The other two elementary schools, one of our schools had 21 cases. Out of those 21 positive cases, we had two students that could potentially be attributed to student and student transmission. One of our schools, we did not have any student-to-student transmission documented, but we were missing some data points in that particular school. So we've had some. It has not been a lot, which is what the CDC has found.
It sounds like potentially some, but you don't know.
Right. Like I said, especially at the high school level, it's hard to guarantee that these individuals did not hang out outside of the school setting.
Or gathered from another source.
Correct. Yeah.
Thanks, Nicole. Nicole, you may want to just take a seat right up there because I'm going to have you speak to another slide in a few moments. So don't head all the way back. It saved you a few steps. Board members, the next slide is the the current mask mandate. Chris went over this earlier this evening, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But this is the the mandate that is currently in place and has been in place for the the bulk of the school year. Now we're going to pivot a little bit and talk about the evolution of our practices. And what I want to make clear to everybody is that what we see in place now is what was, this was not in place at the beginning of the school year. There are some changes that have morphed. There's been an evolution to some of our practices. And our system is moving continuously more towards a normal type environment. This particular slide is a picture of our tech ed area, or I should say, Innovation Center. And it was a tech ed advisory team that met last week. And it was under the direction of Alan Growth. And we had, for the first time, community members in our system after hours and had a wonderful presentation by staff on our different areas. And it was an opportunity for our staff to interact with advisory members who helped us develop this space back prior to the referendum. So we were excited to showcase this. We're excited to have members of our community in in person. And that's something that we've started to do more recently. And that's something that was not done, if you just rewind a few months ago. So evolutionary practices, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things here. I'm not going to go through this entire list, but I wanted to stress that things have changed since the beginning of the school year. We've made good deliberate, methodical decisions based on our data in our system and what we are familiar with and how we are just, and how we're just able to 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 understand the how the virus works and how our students and staff work within this environment. So what you see here is just a listing of different things that have occurred over the course of the year. It was at one point when we started the year, students were not eating lunch in the cafeteria. They were eating lunch in their classrooms at their desks. We're using our lunch spaces, our lunchroom spaces across the district now. Is there still social distancing going on? Yes. Is it six feet? Yes. It's probably the only place in the district that we can guarantee that there's six feet of social distancing. And that's what should be done because students are unmasked at that time while they're eating. But it shows you that we're not still in the classrooms. We are now in the lunchrooms. And that goes for some of our specials. We weren't certain how we were going to offer those in in the fall. And now students are moving to little specials, especially at the elementary. So kids are going into the art room, going into the music room, going into the the gym for FIAED. And so those are changes that have occurred throughout the system. We also know that we've, as Alan alluded to, we have less blended at the elementary and and more in-person instruction going on. That's a change. Recess, we're evolving our expectations with students during recess. Summer Academy, I mentioned that now this is going to be a year where we're all in person and no virtual. Our extracurricular clubs, I think that's a significant piece of the change that has happened since the beginning of the year. There's a number of clubs that we're offering now that just would, we did not offer in the in the beginning of the year because they just didn't suit themselves to a virtual environment. So now our clubs are being offered in person and advisors are engaging with students. You can see that athletics are going on. Tonight, I was able to, with Rick, we went out to the softball field and for the dedication to the softball field. It was great to see our community members there and our students there. We had, we weren't doing those types of things just a few months ago. And now we are doing those types of things. Building rentals, we have opened up our spaces now for building rentals. So for example, as I said, we had the advisory team in. The CPAC was rented last night, and we're opening up the CPAC for rentals. CBC basketball, they are using our spaces now. Our pool, rotaries coming in in the summer. So we are moving back to what I would consider a more normal environment. I see it as a continuum. It's just not, it's just not something that's that's been stagnant. And this particular slide really does highlight the continuum that we've been under for the last, this this last 12 months. So you can see on the left-hand side, you have the current 2021 school year and the practices. I'm not going to go through those because we've we've touched on those practices. I think one key piece that I want to point out is that we never did guarantee six feet of social distancing from the start of the school year. When you go into our spaces, kids are sitting in some situations normally as they would in a pre-pandemic environment. And in some situations, they are six feet apart. And most likely, those are in those larger spaces like the cafeteria. On average, I'd have to say they're probably two to three feet, four feet apart from each other. We do make certain that the teachers are at least six feet away from the students because throughout this entire pandemic, as Conrad alluded to, we had to make certain that our, we could staff our facilities, our classrooms. And so making certain that our teachers had the correct distancing was was key. These two middle columns for the remainder of the year of summer school, this is where we get into some of the potential adjustments if in fact the board wants to entertain this. So you heard Nicole Kafta talked about contact tracing. And you can see it says three feet involved there. So we know that the CDC has changed the social distancing down to three feet. And but they still contract, contact trace at six feet. So that means everybody who's within that positive case, six feet, they would be quarantined. We have students who have been quarantined four times this year. That's more than a quarter's worth of instruction. I mean, that's four, a quarter's 45 days. So we have kids who have been quarantined quarantined four times. So when we looked at that data, and Nicole, you you can certainly help. And I think that was one of the questions that was asked. When when we look at the students who are quarantined, those students weren't necessarily becoming symptomatic, and they weren't necessarily testing positive. So based on our data, what we've seen over the course of the year, I think making the adjustment from six feet of contact tracing to three and having it align with the physical distancing that the CDC has in place makes sense. I don't think it's going to jeopardize the the safety or the environment that we have in place right now. In fact, I think it would lessen, it would lessen the number of students who get quarantined if in fact there is a positive case. I think all the mitigation measures that John has talked about and we have talked about so far speak to our ability to, to, I think, confidently make this this recommendation that instead of having contact tracing go out six feet, we 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 adjust it to three feet and have it aligned with the CDC physical distancing of three feet. The other recommendation, you can see that's bold there for the remainder of the year, is make mask optional outdoors. of the year, is make mask optional outdoors. So I live here in the community. I spend the evenings walking around the community. I'm around on the weekends, and kids are having a wonderful time playing with each other, and some are masked, some are not. I suspect some parents say if they're going to go outside and play, wear a mask, and others will say, you know, don't. And so we see a variety of that kind of activity throughout the community. Sports have been very successful this year, and John Hanlon's not here this evening, but he's followed the WI mitigation measures. And in some situations, you have to be masked, certainly at practice, but in competitions, you don't have to be masked. Tonight, when we're out there watching softball or lacrosse, the girls, you know, the teams aren't masked. But that doesn't mean they still don't have safety measures in place when they're done with practice. And when I look at how students are performing on the playground, you know, they're in recess, they're running around, they're having a good time. Under the board's masking policy, it says they can take off their mask if they're more than six feet away. The way I see students interacting right now on the playground is that some are, their masks are off, but they might run by somebody, and then they're within a couple feet, because they're moving by an individual. But when you think about how they are, how they perform outside, and what they do outside, I'm not too concerned about the spread of COVID during recess. I do have some information that some of the private schools, for example, have allowed their students to go outside for recess the entire year. So it's an entire year, which is, which is good, not just a few months, the entire year. And they've made, they had mask optional the entire time. And their cases were not any, any, any different than ours. And I say the entire year, because we are hearing that schools now are going mask optional, or no mask at all. I think there hasn't been an extended amount of period, extended amount of time to really look at whether that is going to be something that is legitimate, a legitimate option. But for recess, I know there are private schools that for the entire year have made it optional, and their data is no different than our data. So in speaking with Nicole and the administration, I think if we want to continue on that progression to the 2122 school year, back to what we consider a normal year, this seems like a natural progression to make, the three feet of contact tracing and allowing masks to be optional outside. I also have the column there for summer school 2021. Again, I had said, summer school is part of the school year, so just for clarification, we would make those same recommendations for, for summer school. So for the remainder of the year, we are recommending that the masks remain in place, the mask mandate remain in place when you're inside our facilities. And then, you can note at the bottom of this slide, it says, any additional changes warrant surveying the parents. Conrad alluded to that. I think Alan did as well. Because if we're going to have any significant changes to our mitigation measures, we want to give the parents enough time to make an informed decision, and we would need enough time to make any kind of staffing adjustments. I caution the board on just making significant adjustments. We've already moved some of our students in the, in our models two and three times, and we don't want to move a student or students four times, so a different teacher for the fourth time. So I think if we're going to make that change, a significant change, and the board wants to do that, I would ask that we just be given a lot, enough time to get the information we need from the parents and make that change. But that's not our recommendation. Our recommendation is a three feet of contact tracing and mask optional at recess. And the far right column, just kind of forecasting a bit for what this next school year looks like. We've heard some of that this evening. We are planning for in-person instruction. We have our regular schedules in place. Registration's taking place at the high school now, and we're going to have our, our, our schedules back that we had pre-COVID. That's the plan. We know that there may be a few individuals, family members who, or families who are not comfortable with the in-person, and so you can see that we made a note there that we're going to find some option for those families, but the default is to be in-person. And there will have to be some kind of process that they need to go through in order to access that, that virtual option. I'd said for the last three months, that in-person next year means that all of our resources here in the district are going to be focused on in-person instruction. So if we are going to have to, if we're going to have to provide some kind of instruction, which we will, for those who opt out due to some medical condition or some unique circumstances, we can either use some of our esoteric dollars to hire staff to teach those students virtually, or, as indicated here, the district is exploring alternative virtual school options to support needs outside the district's learning platform. The three bullets at the bottom of that far-right column, they're italicized, it's a smaller font, because really, we don't know what that's going to look like. So I don't want to stress, I don't want us to have to make, think we have to make a decision about that. I just put it there as a holding spot, because, you know, any of that's possible. Our goal is to get back to normal, but clearly, we have to be cognizant of our data here in the district and in our community. And then, the next slide would actually be the mask mandate, and altering the language there, our recommendation would be, when outside the school buildings, mask are optional. That concludes our presentation. Any questions that the board members may have, or further clarification on any items?
All right. I'd like to move that we take a five-minute recess before we discuss these items real quick. And we'll be back in five.
Second.
Second. Yeah, second.
Motion in the second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. So the next item that we are discussing is the board may take action on the face-covering mandate for the remainder of the 2021 school year. This is, from a historical perspective, back in August, we instituted the mask mandate, face-covering mandate. Very next day, the governor issued an emergency order. So in that discussion we had, we said that we were going to review the mask mandate on a regular basis, about every two weeks or so, through the staff and so forth. And so we're listing this on to honor that commitment, due to the Supreme Court recently striking down the governor's emergency order. So, there's a historical perspective. So with that said, the items open for discussion.
Well, I guess if no one else wants to start, I'll start. I think we have to start by, if you look at what we're, what we're basing everything on, it is apparently CDC guidelines and recommendations. These are recommendations, they're not requirements. And the reason for that is because the science behind the effectiveness of masks in our environment is not conclusive. The question, though, that we're faced with here is, do we turn these recommendations into requirements for our kids and teachers, when not even the CDC will do that? The decision really requires us to balance the benefits of, of face masks, and I'm talking more about the face masks than the other mitigation factors, but they apply too. Basically balancing those benefits against their harms and costs. And I have done a ton of research over the last year and a half. I've got material from people on all various sides of this matter, some doctors, some scientists. There is, we can't find, I can't find any scientific consensus on whether masks, face masks stop the spread of the coronavirus. They go both ways. There are reports, studies, hypotheses, whatever, they go both ways. So as far as benefits, at best, we have a marginally effective tool, the masks, marginally effective in slowing the spread indoors, and that's at best. It's not conclusive. That's why the CDC says as a recommendation. So that's the benefit. We have a marginally effective tool to delay people in our buildings from catching an illness with a miniscule death rate and a very, very, very low hospitalization rate amongst the people in our, you know, the ages of our building, people in our buildings. That's even including comorbidities in the, in the CDC numbers. And that's something that I don't think anyone's spoken to tonight, is, okay, we're, we are working to prevent the spread. We're, we are dealing with a, an illness that, I mean, exceptions aside, there are exceptions, and you definitely can't make light of those, but there's very risk, very low risk of harm in, in the people in our building catching this. The costs, on the other hand, are obvious. We, we talk about the COVID gap, there's been a huge negative impact on learning. There's tons of scientific evidence, I did find that, on various physical, psychological harms caused by, by face masks. I don't think there's anyone that's going to argue, although I think I did hear someone say this, that it's good for the kids to be breathing their own carbon dioxide emissions all day long, having trouble understanding their teachers and each other's, and trying to exercise in a mask. So when I look at the costs, the benefits, which are marginal, and the costs, which are kind of high, I don't think we have enough to justify some of these strategies and requirements. However, there are obviously tons of logistical issues in the, in making changes to this school year. I'm not talking about summer school, but this school year, where you've got 30 days left, and the amount of disruption, I think, would be a significant problem. So I'm comfortable on the, the remainder of the 2021 school year to, I'm comfortable with your recommendations, Mr. Mignacki, with one addition. I mean, I would like us to go as far as we can to getting back to normal, and the one addition would be, if people are spaced inside six feet or more away from another person, masks could be optional. So that would be, whatever mine is, the kids sitting alone in the cafeteria, Todd, maybe when you have a meeting with some of your, your, your district staff, or your team, and you're in the boardroom, where everyone's spaced out, or maybe even up here, if we're six feet apart, that kind of a situation, that masks could be optional. So those are my two cents.
Was that a motion, or just comments?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, I'll make that a motion.
I would second that motion. And can I add a little to the discussion as well? I think what's clear to me tonight is that all of us, no matter where we're falling on this, we all want what's best for our children in the district. And at some point, I think we need to begin looking sensitively at starting to tweak some of the measures we have in place, or the goalposts are going to continue to be moved down the road. And I think many people have the perception that we might be looking to disregard recommendations. I don't think that's the case. I think it's just important to continue to ask questions, as well as look at the actual data of schools that maybe have started to tweak these as well. And I wanted to share a little bit of that data. Trinity Lutheran, here in Nozaki County, they've been mask optional for the entire year. They've had two cases for the entire year, with no transmission found between students. Living Word also has been mask optional when students were seated at desks. I'm told that they never kept a count, as they did not have more than a few cases, and none were found to be transmission between students. I did follow up with the Nozaki Washington Health Department, and they confirmed that there's not been any outbreaks. And then there are a few districts who have dropped the mask mandate as of April. Kettle Marine Lutheran has not had a case since they've dropped it. Three Lakes, they've had one case since they've dropped it, and Crandon has not had any since they've dropped it. So I think it's important to continue to look at what's happening around us, in addition to those guidelines that we are given.
Just a quick note, I think Kettle Marine and Trinity Lutheran are, while examples in our area, much smaller school districts, and not comparable in size to Cedarburg School District, and especially student body. I think Trinity Lutheran's like 130, and Kettle Marine's maybe 500 at the high school. So definitely not an apples-to-apples comparison. But I would say, you know, I think despite all the data, you know, our kids come first. We have the data in front of us. We've put mitigation efforts in place. They've worked. Our kids have been in the whole year, which was really setting the curve early on. I think we have an opportunity here to, again, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, kind of set the curve on, okay, what's worked, what can we maybe start to move in the direction of some normalcy in the fall? And that could be that proposed recommendation to the masks. So, I mean, I think it's obvious that students come first, and we want to make sure that we don't have this impact to the district through the end of the year. We've got 30 days out. We're almost there. The finish line is in sight. Let's let them finish the year. Let's let them have success. We have testing coming up. And to what Conrad said earlier, to turn that around and to change sections, especially at the elementary school level, and the impact of students with disabilities and medical conditions, I mean, this is a huge impact we're talking about to every individual student. And I know we don't want that for our students. We want to make sure that they have a good end of this year, so we can start looking at the fall. So I, I would actually propose a different recommendation, Dave. I like what you have in terms of proposing what Todd has presented, but I think if we're putting something optional with six feet, that becomes more of like a policing effort that has to be tracked by the staff, and that's just additional, it's just additional drain on the system.
I know they're already doing that, though, with, no matter what the rule is, there's police issues. And I think this is a pretty, pretty, I would imagine, an unusual situation in our buildings. And it probably would apply more to staff than to the students.
Sure. Yep.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do. I'll support the motion, but I would prefer it to be three feet, that they could take the stupid mask off when they're sitting, because World Health has done this from, from the beginning. They've been three foot. And there's countries out there a lot, that their rates and their death rates and everything else are significantly lower than ours. And they've been following the, I'm sorry, one meter, which is 3.28 feet, but they've, they've been following the 3.28 from the beginning. I mean, I'll support it, you know, if we can, you know, pass this through, but I truly would like to have seen it even go on further than that. I mean, any chance we can have that these kids can get this off, because I have read enough studies that show that it is not healthy for you to be breathing through these for long periods of time. And, you know, the doctor keeps shaking his head in the audience, but there are studies out there that, and I can tell you that the last time you guys voted on this, I wasn't at the meeting. I was laying in a hospital bed at Aurora. And when I put the mask on and the pulse ox was on, my level dropped. My, my, my saturation level dropped every time. The nurses, you know, were having a little, it was like a little game. We put my mask on, take my mask off, and see how low mine would go. So it does affect people. Maybe not everyone, but it does affect people.
Any further discussion?
I'll throw my two cents in. First of all, I do want to congratulate the administration, the parents, the teachers, because starting this year in-person was a great decision. Now we know it was. We didn't, we weren't sure at the beginning, but we said, no, we are in the education business. We're not here to switch just to a virtual 100%. We're here to educate kids, and I firmly believe in-person education is far superior to virtual education for students. So I'm glad that we did that. People were naysayers at the time, that we shouldn't be doing that. I'm glad we did. I think there's a lot of well-intentioned people. I know people here in the audience that are on totally opposite ends of this, this spectrum. And they're, they're all great people. They're well-meaning. They care about their kids. They're on different ends of this, and that's acceptable. I'm okay with that. They should have their opinions. But when I look at a calendar, and right now, it seems shots are readily available, very easily to go get at a location. So if you've got it now, your first shot, your second shot, and 21 or 28 days later, then you need another two weeks of time to build up the immunities. We're at the end of the school year. If you look at a calendar, we're there. I mean, I, I think this discussion is much better had over the summer months, and not at this point in time. We're just taking a risk, a dicey risk, that right at the end of the school year, somebody comes down with something, and we look like we have egg on our face for that. I think this is a great discussion to have over the summer, but not during this current school year. Let's finish out the year strong, and then get into next year. That's my two cents. That's my two cents.
Yeah.
My two cents, all right, I'd like the suggested face covering mandate, the update. I like, you know, when outside of school buildings, masks are optional. One thing I don't like is the addition to that, I do think that it'll add more burden to our teachers policing that, and I know, I know they're already doing some policing, but I just don't, I just don't want to add that on to their, on to their table, so, but otherwise, I'm okay with it.
Would it satisfy some of your concerns to have the option apply to non-students?
Yeah, I mean, that is my major concern.
That was Ms. Padberg's concern too, and that would alleviate...
Say that again, so it would be for staff only, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's the question, right, would it, well, it would be, would it not apply to students? I'd like it to apply to everybody, and we should vote on that, and then if we don't, then maybe we can tweak it to non-students. I just want to make sure we can get as far as we possibly can go for the people in our buildings, to move, to advance.
I think for me, I just prefer consistency across the board, so, so no.
It's worked, if I may, Chris, can I make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The one reason it's worked well is that there's the element of role modeling. So teachers are masked up, and administration, everybody's masked up in the building, and so we don't have this kind of, why are you masked, and why are, and if you are, then I don't want to be.
Well, then why don't we, well, then why don't we do a role model in a way we should? We're an educational entity, right? So aren't we educating them that, okay, if you're this far apart, you're safer, or you're out of the dangers, or whatever it is? Why pretend by making people put masks on when, if the six-feet rule would apply anyway, or would be reasonable? I just don't understand that logic, I guess.
Yeah, I was just referring, Dave, if you're going to allow staff to have that six-feet, and they're walking down a hall apart from each other, kids are going to see that, it just becomes more of that kind of...
Oh, okay, and maybe I didn't clarify what I was talking more about was that when you're stationary, stationary within six, you know, with your, no longer within six feet of you, you're stationary, so maybe you've got the teacher at the head of the class, isolated, you know, not moving in, you've got people in your, Todd, in your meetings, you've got, I don't know, the kid in the cafeteria maybe sitting down, that was more, I mean, yeah, you don't want, I think you'd have trouble right now with moving into hallways and trying to measure everyone who's walking around the hall, I agree with you on that, yeah.
Yeah, I think if you mask, if you move, you mask, but if you can be social-distanced, sitting there, following the recommendations, you could take it off for that little break to get some oxygen and some fresh air.
Right.
I mean, and our air conditioning, or, I mean, our air exchange system John talked about is so good, it's so good that we've been throwing so much fresh air in here that poor Kristen has been covered up with her, you know, blanket through the whole meeting here, because it's cold in here because of our air exchange. I think we, you know, single pass, every time it passes over our UV, you know, it's killing the virus.
I think it's a thoughtful consideration, but I just, I lean on the side of consistency, just especially with the time we have left, it's so short, and I think to Kevin's point, we're going to be able to revisit this pretty soon in the summer, crazy to think that it's almost May, right? So I think it's a thoughtful consideration, I think we're close to it, maybe it's something we talk about for summer school, but I think for now, for consistency's sake, we're going to, we should finish out the year across the board.
And to add to that, I think the disruption for families, because we know we'll have people who go virtual because of this, if we make this change. I'm more comfortable with the proposal that the administration made about the three-foot contact tracing and mask optional outdoors, I'm okay with that. Once you leave the school, you're outside, I don't think it makes a difference, when you get to the sidewalk, the air's different than it is walking down our property. So those make sound steps in the right direction, and I think these other topics are great topics for us to have this summer.
Yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we vote on the motion, and then if it doesn't pass, then, well, you can make your motion, and...
Oh, sure. Really quick qualifier, what's, like, when we say on-school grounds versus in-school buildings, how is school grounds different than outside? I might be missing something. Because it says worn by everyone on-school grounds.
What are you looking at?
The proposed, the first line, but not, you know, outside of the buildings, it's optional.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
I think that was the old language.
Yep, that's the old language.
It's in the proposed one.
Yeah, you should, right, it should say in the buildings.
Right, because wouldn't it just be in-school buildings or outside?
And while transporting students.
And while transporting.
And while transporting.
It's kind of, it just, to me, it's a little confusing, because to me, I think a school grounds, like, outside.
Yep, so on-school grounds would be struck.
Would be what?
Would be taken out.
Okay, cool, okay, thanks.
Can we vote on the first motion, then?
Yeah.
Can you repeat it, just for clarity's sake?
Yeah, just say it out loud. Can you say your motion?
Sure, the motion is to, for the remainder of the 2021 school year, adopt the proposals that Mr. Budnaki made, in addition to that, adding six-feet option, or if you're with, if you're six feet or further, someone's six feet or further away from another person indoors, and they're stationary, they can, the mask could be optional during that time period.
And are you omitting the language when on-school grounds?
Oh, on the, yes, yes, to make that, yes. So that's on the face covering mandate, yes.
Yes.
So that's the motion.
Okay. All right. Everyone clear? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Nay. Do you want to show a hand, so Brenda can have it?
Roll call.
No, just raise the hands.
So can the ayes raise their hand? Now can the nays raise their hand?
So it fails on a tie?
It's a tie, so, right.
Yes, fails. All right.
I would like to make a motion that we change the rules as recommended by staff with the removing of the on-school grounds that Kristen has asked for, and the social, the three-foot for the tracing.
That's a separate item, that's the next one.
I'll say it for the other one, then. I'll make that motion, so we can see if we can get one to pass, but then I'm going to have a second one after.
So just the way it's written?
Just the way it's written, with the exception of when our on-school, when our on-school grounds removed.
I'll second that.
Wait, I don't understand.
Is that the most, is that the...
Is that the, it's proposed one?
The proposed one that staff gave us.
But without school grounds.
Okay, so the proposed one for the remainder of 2021?
Yep.
Okay.
Just removing on, when on-school grounds, because really, if you're on-school grounds, it's optional, you can take them off, so it's only in the school building.
In school buildings.
So the English teacher is correct, we should probably remove it.
Right.
Could you restate it, just for my clarification?
Sure, that we change the policy for the mask mandate, to face coverings are required to be worn by all individuals when in-school buildings and while transferring students in district-provided or contracted vehicles until further notice, when an unoccupied room, or when eating and drinking, the mask may be removed, and the mask may also be removed outside school buildings are optional.
And then it includes that language at the bottom, correct?
Yep.
Yep, it still includes, we're not changing that, that's the existing, so it's just adding the when outside school buildings. And removing the on-school grounds.
Okay.
You got that, Brenda? Okay.
So we have a motion in a second, any other discussion on that?
Again, this is for 2021, not summer school, right?
Through the remainder of the school year?
Remainder of the school year, so both, right now.
Includes summer school.
It would include summer school right now.
So the, let's carve, I would want to carve out summer school to see if we can maybe make some more progress on the...
Well, my thought was, let's pass this motion, include summer school, and then try to carve it out, but at least then you don't have to go back and make this motion twice.
Okay.
Was my thought, Dave.
Yeah, that'll work.
Good point.
So we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? It is unanimous. All right. Moving on to the next issue, the board may take action regarding contact tracing for the remainder of the 2021 school year.
I think that was in the last motion, wasn't it?
No, they told me I couldn't.
No, we already...
I'll make a motion that we follow staff recommendation to move it to three feet to match with CDC and World Health's distancing that they feel is safe.
A second.
May I, Rick, instead of making reference to the CDC and World Health, maybe it's just simply that we're going to change the contact tracing to...
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, that's not in the motion, that was just my commentary, I'm sorry.
Bleeds in.
So to be clear, it's to the three feet?
We're just moving it to three feet per staff recommendation.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, any discussion on that?
Oh, is there a mo?
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. Next is take action regarding social distancing for the remainder of the 2021 school year.
What exactly does that mean?
From six to three, right?
That would be the six to three feet that we just talked about. So, Dave, this would be where you, Dave, this is where you could say, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't think, and I'd ask Nicole just to come speak to this, I think the social distancing remains as is, because we've never been able to get this full social distancing of six feet in place, so since beginning of the year, it was social distance to the best of our ability, and so there doesn't have to be any motion on C or D, because that's not something we're proposing changing.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So...
Then before we move on, I would like to go back to the mask one, and look at Dave's motion that he was talking about for adults, and not specifically students, that if they're six feet apart, they could come off if they're not moving.
As a separate motion?
As a separate motion.
And this is for the remainder of the 2021 school year?
Correct.
Well, can we do that after this one? Since we kicked it off? The social distancing, are we going to...
Well, there's no change.
We're not going to, no one wants to...
No action.
There's no recommendation by the administration.
Right, I just want to make sure that no one has any discussion or any points in it.
Keep the current plan in place, not making a motion.
Can I ask, are we also doing that for quarantining, or can we discuss that as well?
We're going to discuss that, but Rick would like to discuss the face mask mandate again.
Okay.
And Dave, tell me if I get it right, I'd like to make a motion that in addition to what we've already changed for the mask mandate, due to the concerns of people saying, you know, the students and being able to do it with the parents, my motion would be that we, if an adult in a school building can be social-distanced six or more feet, that they could remove the mask. So that would be our board meetings, I mean, that's the motion, but that would be our board meetings if we were distanced, that would mean our staff, when they're in meetings, and they're distanced. And I'm saying this because when I sat through the interviews for principal, our staff that was in there was all reading questions that I had in front of me, but I couldn't always hear what they were saying because of the mask, and I think if our staff would be able to communicate better, I don't think that would hurt anything.
I'll second that.
A motion in a second? Any discussion? So when does it actually apply, Rick? When doesn't it apply?
In-school buildings by adults, so that you take out the whole having to supervise and police the kids. We're going to leave the kids till the end of the year, but adults, if they're social-distanced, wouldn't have to wear them. So our staff, if they were in staff meetings, our board meetings, I mean, technically, if people were in this audience and they were six feet apart, they wouldn't have to wear it.
I think the recommendation, if I may, I think the recommendation from the CDC would be that you still wear face coverings, even with that distancing.
Yeah, the...
That's best practice, if I'm not mistaken, Nicole.
Yeah, it is best practice, and I guess my question would be, how do we justify that, that we're going to allow adults to do that, but we're not going to offer that to our kids? Because the families will be emailing with that question. Why can the adults...
Because I'm assuming it's going to happen outside of, I'm not picturing our teachers doing it, but I mean, if you're in a closed room with a bunch of adults in a meeting, why wouldn't you allow that if everyone felt comfortable doing it? And we're not requiring it, we're just making it optional.
Correct.
But it's still recommended that you wear a face covering if you don't know if those that you are around are vaccinated.
Right, but there's no science behind any of that, or it's competing, and so we're going to, what I think the motion is doing is, what we're elected to do is make a decision, and if, you know, we've evaluated all the science, and again, we do the cost-benefit analysis, if we're six feet apart, or someone's six feet away, and they want the, you know, the grown adults, they want the option, then I think that's the motion is to make it optional.
Again, I think that's a great discussion to have over the summer months, but why make a change in this last few weeks of school just because, and it does create different issues and stress for parents and staff, everyone, there's just no need to do this. Great discussion to have over the summer, though.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion in a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the ayes, raise your hand, please. The nays, raise your hand, please. Fails for a tie. All right, now, we'll move on to quarantining for the remainder of the 2021 school year.
I do have a question. Do we have data on how many of the quarantined students and staff went on to develop symptoms?
Just the numbers I reported earlier, the students that were identified as close contacts, and student-to-student transmission, I do not.
What we do know is by the change that's been made this evening to go down to three feet of social distancing, it's going to lessen the number of students who are quarantined. So instead of going out six feet and making an arc and capturing all those, we're only going out three feet and capturing those, so the number of quarantines, just to make sure we're all clear, will significantly, could be in half, potentially.
Cut them by half.
Just so we're all clear.
And the proposal is to reduce it to the seven to 10, right? Because that's not current state?
No, that's the current guidelines.
But not current state, it's in the school, right? Or is that current state in school? Have we moved to seven and 10 in the district?
It's seven to 10 days quarantine, yes.
Okay. Which was a reduction from 14 earlier in the year.
Correct, at the start of the year, it was 14 days.
To Kate's question, though, do you have that information available? I know you said you shared it with us before, could you just grab it real quick?
I think, I've got it written down.
Oh.
While she's getting it, it was 13 students, six at the high school, two at Webster, and then two, two at one elementary school, three at another elementary school, and zero at the other elementary school. So doing the math, it's about 6.7% of the cases were, ended up being...
Were possibly.
Possible.
Possibly, because we have no, there's no way of us telling where they contracted it.
And that was from contact tracing, right?
That was through contact tracing.
Yeah.
So positive individual, five quarantines, and then perhaps one of those quarantines ended up becoming positive because of being a close contact of the positive individual. So again, it's much easier to verify that at the elementary school level than it is at the high school level, just because of extracurriculars, hanging out outside of school, because sometimes, obviously, friends are in the same classroom, so we'd have to quarantine them all. But we did have some student-to-student transmission. But as a whole, if you're asking if a lot of our students became symptomatic during quarantine, no.
And it could be possible... And it could be possible that students did give it to one another, but they never showed any symptoms.
They were asymptomatic.
Neither one did, so when we talk about possibilities, it could be quite rampant, but we just don't know.
And again, we do not know, because that time you said student-to-student, we had student, we don't know.
Right.
Because it could have happened outside of the school, it could have been somebody else they had contact, there's no way we'll ever know, because statistically, you can't, you don't know who gave you the virus, there's no tag on it that tells us who gave it to you.
Agreed.
Right, there's just instances, especially at the elementary school level, where we had one student identify as positive, quarantine those students, and then have one student test positive, just because of where they were seated in the classroom.
Yeah.
But again, the cases are low.
But again.
Much higher when it's household contacts.
But again, we don't know that it was because they were seated next to them, they could have gotten it from mom, dad, or someone at the grocery store.
Yep.
So, one, if I may, one way to address the quarantining was to address the contact tracing.
Yeah, to reduce the volume of students going in and out.
That was our way of addressing the quarantine, many people talk about the quarantine as, you know, how many, or the length of time, we're not suggesting that we adjust the days of quarantine, but we will quarantine less students because we are only contacting, tracing out three feet versus six.
Yep.
Right.
And again, that was the CDC that came out with that, a month or a couple months ago, maybe?
The reduced time for quarantine?
No, the three feet.
The physical distance.
The three feet, that was just like within the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole, if you were, I know this is kind of anecdotal, but do you feel that there, just the fact that we'd be doing three feet and not six feet for contact tracing, that the, what you, the contact tracing that you did in the last year or so, do you think that the numbers would go down significantly based on what you did? Because I know you did a lot, but I know I'm putting you on the spot, too, so if you can't answer, that's great, too.
Right, no, I mean, we definitely quarantined a lot of students, staff, because of having that six feet, because if you have students in the classroom and they're seated three feet apart, you're taking out two students on either side, you're taking out two students in the front, you're taking two students in the back, then you also have to measure on the diagonal, so if that was less than six feet, which in a lot of the classrooms it was, we had to take out those students as well, so cutting down to three feet will really reduce the number of quarantines quite a bit, especially at the high school level.
Right. Okay.
Do we want to go back? Dave had a motion earlier he wanted to make on summer school, but I didn't include it in my motion when he asked?
Oh, right, so.
I want, I've just, you had said something, and I don't remember what it was, but I said, let's get it through with one, and then go.
Yeah, right, so on summer school, again, doing the cost-benefit, or the harm, you know, the kind of, you know, the harm balancing here, I'd like to make a motion that summer school be mask optional.
I don't think that that's noticed in here, I know it says 2021 school year, but it doesn't say specifically summer school, I know we, when we talk about summer schools, summer academy, we talk about it differently.
It's part of the school year, our staff has always said, and we've always said, it's the continuation of our school year, we start our new school year on, you know, in September, so it is part of the school year, it was just we segregated it out earlier when Dave wanted to put it in the motion, I, we've already moved that we're going to keep these rules in effect that we just changed for summer school was in the motion, so it's, we can discuss it, it was already voted on once, it's part of the school year. Whether or not there's enough votes to pass his motion is a whole other story.
Yeah, I would.
There hasn't even been a second.
But it can be discussed, Mr. President, because we already have.
I think to Conrad's point, though, I mean, if we do that, it's already, it's already going to be difficult to get staff, we're not going to have the virtual option, we're going to have in-person only, and I know, you know, Kevin mentioned earlier, this, it's going to be important, I mean, students are going to have gaps coming out of this year based off the testing at the end of the year, so I just would fear that we wouldn't be able to service our students, we wouldn't get the staff.
So that we can discuss it by Robert's rules, I'll second the motion that Dave made, so that it can have discussion.
Thanks. My brain stops working now.
So, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on anything for summer school, I think we have time to address it in the next meeting, one month from now, it won't affect anything. Tonight, I think we've got a really good start at making some positive changes here for our students and for our staff, and I'm all for building on them, but I don't, I would not vote for that tonight, in any form.
Nor would I.
So then, we know how everybody almost stands, so why don't we vote on it?
No, motion's made, we should vote.
There was a motion made, we should vote on it.
Any other discussion?
I can't hear everything being discussed past, Mr. Reimer, so can you fill me in a little bit, is there a motion on the table?
Yes, the motion was to make the summer school 2021 mask optional, and there was some discussion about it.
So, if I can add a little bit, over the past couple of weeks, I've been talking with people in the community and asking them, you know, what would make you feel more comfortable going mask optional, and I heard a couple of different times, why don't we do summer school mask optional, because then it's an optional activity, it's not school, you have a choice whether or not to be there, and then we feel more comfortable coming back in fall, having that data point. So, I know there are logistics, but that would be something to consider.
Problem is, as a public institution, we're not offering virtual, and so we wouldn't be servicing all of our students.
We could, though, if they came.
I guess I would just reflect on the conversation we had earlier, and how difficult it is to get staff to, we have unfilled positions currently, and those unfilled positions are not because we have, they're thinking there's a mask mandate in place, they're not filled because we're having a difficult time getting staff, and so I think a change that maybe that the board's suggesting would make that more difficult, and I anticipate we would not have the students attending summer school that we need to attend summer school to help close that COVID gap, just my thoughts from what I, from our conversations.
Any change to the mitigation will negatively impact our ability to staff the summer program, it could jeopardize the entire program, we are having a hard time filling the staff as it is, and I know we'll lose some people, and remember, it's a voluntary program, no one has to go to the summer program, so if the masks are in place and we can hire the staff, we will be able to serve the students who need it the most, if we take away that, I can't predict what will happen, I can't give you anything solid, but I know it will be extremely difficult to staff it.
Before we spend much more time discussing this, because we vote, because I've already heard three of six members tonight say they're not going to support it, so it's going to fail.
Good point.
Why are we wasting all the time talking?
Well, let's raise some hands here, so we don't have to go through that step again.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please raise your hands. Against?
Nay.
Three, three.
Was it three to three?
I didn't see it.
What?
Was that three to three?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So, it fails for a tie.
So, Kevin, you mentioned talking about the six-foot rule in the summer, you said it would be a conversation to have in the summer, did you mean about the summer, or did you mean in the summer about the fall?
About the summer, about the fall.
Oh, okay.
Potentially discuss these for when we come back to school in September, that we'd have some of these new measures in place then, but not for summer school.
So, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to kind of move us forward here, but would anyone, what are your thoughts on doing the mask and move idea for summer school?
The mask what, say that again?
Mask and move, so basically, where, what, I think it's called mask, mask when moving, I'm sorry, M and M is what Todd calls it, that's where, if you're within, I guess we do six feet, and you're stationary, the mask could be optional, and then you would put it on when you're moving.
Are they moving a bunch of things?
I think you got a three, three loss again there.
Well, I was inviting discussion, I guess, I didn't make a motion, okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Board members, can I just, so there are two changes, I'm sorry to interrupt, Rick, there are two changes that are going to be made, and I just want to note to the public that we will, we will start communicating that out, with our goal of having those two changes fully implemented on Monday, we'll start that communication, because we want to, there's some internal things we need to adjust, and we want to make certain everyone's on the same page, the principals know how to handle recess and all those types of things, so we'll start communicating that out, but you can anticipate those two changes to take full effect on Monday, it just gives us enough time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have a motion in a second, did you get that, Brenda? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, everyone, for sticking around.